Good evening, West Orange. My name is Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. Welcome to the Township Council meeting for February 7th, 2023. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Council President, Amy Williams.
Good evening. Thank you all for joining us this evening for our fifth meeting of 2023. I would like to start this evening by asking Madam Clark to read the opening statement.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23rd, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2022. Councilwoman Castelina?
Present.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clark. I would like to begin reminding everyone that this is February, not only the month of love that we celebrate, but we also celebrate this month as Black History Month. And with that being the case, we'd like to have a certificate and recognition of Black History Month. And it reads, "Whereas founded on work done beginning in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson to bring attention to the need for acknowledging and accurately representing Black and African-American history, Black United Students and Black Educators at Kent State University used the foundation laid by Woodson to found Black History Month in 1970. And beginning in 1976, every president has declared the month of February as Black History Month. And whereas Black and African-Americans have made innumerable contributions that have enriched America and indeed the lives of every American, and every American should acknowledge and express thankfulness for these contributions. And Black and African-Americans have made and continue to make America a better place and Americans a better people. And whereas throughout the arc of history to the present day, Black and African-Americans have experienced and endured the inhumanity of injustices and inequities, not just from societal and institutional biases and racism rooted in white supremacy, but also from other Americans. And whereas it is a moral imperative that each of us learns about, sheds light upon, and condemns the inhumanity of injustices and inequities that Black and African-Americans continue to experience and endure. But moreover, that each of us takes action to realize true reforms. Now therefore be it resolved, the Township Council of the Township of West Orange do hereby recognize February 2023 as National Black History Month and call upon each of us to listen to Black voices, to learn about experiences of Black and African-Americans throughout history and also today, to shed light upon and condemn the inhumanity of injustices and inequities that Black and African-Americans experience and endure, to take ownership for each of our roles in perpetuating these, to confront and end biases and racism stoked by white supremacy, and to take action to realize true reforms in ourselves, our community, our culture, and our institutions to abolish injustice and inequities that Black and African-Americans still experience and endure today. And with humility and love for one another, taking action for true reforms, may we join hands as a united and diverse America. Thank you. With that, we would like to make some recognitions of some of those who have served our community for the last 30-plus years with high commendations. And at this time, I would like to ask the representatives of the West Orange African Heritage Organization to please come forward. It is my personal privilege to acknowledge the West Orange African Heritage Organization on this Black History Month. So the mission of the West Orange African Heritage Organization, WAHO, founded in 1999, is to build a strong community. I think I dated you all a little bit. Okay. The West Orange African Heritage Organization fosters relationships throughout the community that bridge cultural differences. The organization takes pride in celebrating and sharing with the larger community the historical and cultural contributions of people of African descent. Whereas WAHO performs community service and encourages civic responsibility of West Orange citizens. Examples include voter registration efforts, hosting panel discussions for the public office candidates, disseminating information to promote civic awareness and advocating for diversity in appointments and howering throughout the township. We also conduct annual drives to provide school supplies to benefit our local students, toys for children in need during the holiday season, and food to support the West Orange Food Pantry. Whereas WAHO is dedicated to assuring academic achievement for all of our students in West Orange, we are widely known for our elementary school tutoring program and the Thomas W. Holcomb Senior Scholarship for outstanding college-bound West Orange High School students. WAHO also provides an annual STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math program, and they bring STEM professionals and high-achieving high school students from diverse backgrounds into the Edison Middle School to inspire students to explore and excel in STEM courses as they enter junior and high school. Whereas WAHO supports its members and community by providing networking, cultural, and family events. These include First Friday Social and Professional Networking, Kwanzaa, an Afternoon of Jazz, Black History Month programs, and Men Who Cook Scholarship fundraiser. Whereas WAHO contributes to the economic vitality of our community by encouraging the support of family and supporting cultural networking and family events. They include, I just said that. Right, I just said that. Okay. Just said that. Whereas WAHO contributes to the economic vitality of our community by encouraging the support of local business and businesses owned by persons of African descent. We do this through promoting awareness of their existence, spotlighting businesses at their events, and encouraging people to consider their service when spending their consumer and business dollars. On behalf of my Township Council, the Administration of West Orange, we salute you.
I guess after that, I don't need to say anything. Because that was very inclusive, and it did denote most in all of the things that we do. I'd like to say, Honorable Mayor McCartney, Madam President, and the same members of the council, I am both honored and elated to receive this commendation on behalf of the West Orange African Heritage Organization. I am here because those who came before me left a legacy, left a blue plant, left a mandate to be fulfilled. They passed a torch so that we, the torchbearers, would be unwavering in our efforts to assure that our mission be accomplished, that our youth receive the best possible education. Our seniors live in safe, healthy, unperturbed environments, and that our growing community be informed, included, represented, and respected. And although it is a wonderful, delightful, and satisfying to be recognized for the service and work that one does, it is also gratifying to know that we have succeeded on many levels. And of course, our work is incomplete. In our 25 years serving the community, thus enhancing the lives of some residents of our progressive beloved city, we have operated purely in answer to a needed voice by our community. And we have required only that we be given the space and latitude needed to complete our ongoing mission, filling a gap that exists in our community. Just as all citizens have a need, desire, and responsibility to nurture and take care of their own, so did the organizers of this organization. And they knew they could not do it alone. They partnered with and made coalitions with various members of this community. They found great support and lots of help from our public officials, school superintendents, local businesses, and private citizens as well. We cherish these alliances, and we are proud of our efforts and accomplishments. But mostly, we are overjoyed that you, this municipal body, on this day and at this time, have recognized our efforts and have awarded us with this proclamation. And we, I, are truly grateful. And I would like at this time for any of our members who are here to come up and be acknowledged. We be to understand that we are recognized as members of an organization worthy to be recognized. We are WAHO.
Colleagues, would join me for a photo opportunity? And Madam Mayor, if you'll please join us as well?
Ready for Saturday?
Oh yeah, can't wait. I know, it's gonna be an early one. Last Saturday, I got to sleep in. We didn't have any ribbon cuttings or anything. I slept till 11 o'clock.
And as we continue, I would like to remind everyone also, February is also notorious for heart-healthy month. And so because heart health, mental health, physical health are all initiatives that I think are very important. I've asked our Health Director to support Heart Healthy Month this month by bringing representatives for Montclair State to do a brief presentation. So if our Health Director, Mr. Mike Bonzino, would introduce our guest speakers this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. As Council President said, February is Heart Healthy Awareness Month. And in recognition of that, we've asked our partners from Montclair State University School of Nursing to provide a brief presentation on heart health awareness. So it's my pleasure to introduce Sarah Kelly from the Montclair State University School of Nursing.
Sarah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk to you about heart health and the importance of cardiovascular exercise. So the objectives basically are to provide background on the information associated with risk factors associated with heart health and heart disease, to identify some key numbers that you need to be aware of in order to keep your heart health, or heart healthy, so to speak, discuss some lifestyle behaviors, and also to review some just important signs about cardiovascular health. Skip over that. Leading cause of death in this area is heart disease. As you can see, there's well over 161,000 people that have suffered from heart disease in this area. Or actually, in the United States in whole. In New Jersey, adjusting for age disease, heart health is the number-one cause of death in New Jersey. Numbers to know, we're just gonna kind of go through some of these numbers I think that are important. 200 is the goal for your total cholesterol. We want to make sure that we keep your cholesterol underneath 200. 130, this is the LDL, which is called the lower, or the bad cholesterol. 130, anything below 130 is considered good. 40 is our goal for our HDL, which is considered a good cholesterol level. So anything greater than 140 is considered great. Good. These are just some numbers you can go by regarding your cholesterol, your LDL, your HDL, and your triglycerides as well. You see the desirable, the borderline, and the high. You sort of want to be in the desirable range. And if you know your numbers and you need help with them, or you don't know your numbers, I encourage you to reach out to your primary care physician and to just get a simple blood work. I get one done, you know, every year. We get blood work done as a part of our physical. And I encourage you, if you haven't done so, to do so. 120 is a blood pressure. systolic blood pressure of 120 over diastolic of 80 is very normal blood pressure. They are now recommending trying to keep your blood pressure in the 1 teens systolically with the diastolic in the 70s. So I encourage you to seek out maybe some medical regimen or even just heart-healthy diet changes can help with that. And you can see here a nice little category of normal, mean a systolic less than 120. Elevated, they consider 120 to 130. And then an elevated blood pressure of what we consider hypertension, stage one, is anything 130 and slightly over. The American Heart Association recommends checking blood pressures. I know a lot of stores and a lot of industries have automatic blood pressure machines, and you walk in them. CVS has one. If you don't have a manual cuff, go to a CVS once a week, get your blood pressure checked. 150 is the amount of exercise we all need to do as adults per week, which I know is a lot considering we're a very active lifestyle. But as much exercise as you can do, we really encourage you to do so. And that just includes walking, brisk walking, swimming, jogging, cycling. Although I don't recommend it when it's really cold outside or when it's snowing or raining because you're liable to have accidents. Weight training is important as well for your bone and your health balance. But it doesn't really contribute to cardiovascular health. So strength training with weights is not, it's great to do, but it doesn't really affect your heart as well as the other types of cardiovascular exercises do. How many of you here belong to a gym? Anyone belong to a gym? Anyone have equipment at home that they use to exercise with? I have a Peloton. I sucked it up. When COVID hit, I bought a Peloton, and I'm faithful to it because it cost me a lot of money, and I want to get good use out of my Peloton. So I do it every morning. I get up at 5:30 because I teach class at 8:30 to do the Peloton. A little bit crazy, but you gotta do what you gotta do. Be active. Exercise, walking. There's lots of parks around the area to just get out and walk. If the air is good, the weather's cooperative, get out and walk. Reduce stress, and that doesn't mean drinking alcohol. That just means practicing some meditation effects. Gardening is a great way to exercise, doing household chores. Moving the vacuum cleaner is a really good exercise. You wouldn't think so, but it cleans your house and it gets you moving. Listening to music, yoga, any type of relaxation technique is really good to reduce your stress level. And then, of course, the almighty diet. Diet plays a big part in heart health. Maintaining and eating the proper heart-healthy food is really good. So fruits, vegetables, fruits and vegetables, whole grains, things that are lean protein, lean meats are really good to eat. Things that are not fat-conscious. So eating fat, although tastes really good, not good for you. Mediterranean diets are really healthy diets. Fish. How many of you like seafood? I try to have a piece of salmon once a week. And I eat a lot of chicken. A lot of chicken. Like, I think I could own a chicken coop with the chicken I eat. Anyway, so some signs of heart attack that you need to be aware of. Pain, chest pain, specifically pain that radiates down your arm. You want to make sure that you're not losing balance. Your eyes, sometimes difficulty vision, blurred vision could be signs of impending heart issues. Face, drooping of your face could be issues with heart health. Arm weakness, as I mentioned. Delayed speech or slurred speech could also be signs of any type of heart health issue. And then, of course, the most important piece, if you are experiencing any of these signs, is to not delay treatment. Call 911 immediately. Even if you don't know if it's a heart attack, if something weird is going on, and you just can't put a point on it, call 911. That's what they're there for. They're there to help. So use them because you don't know what, you know, could save your life one day. You can see the signs and symptoms for men and women are slightly different. Men, it's more common to have nausea and vomiting, to have some jaw pain, some lower neck pain, some maybe some pressure on their chest, and also some shortness of breath. Whereas women, they will not only feel nausea and vomiting and have the jaw pain and the chest pain, but they might have pain in their lower chest or their upper abdominal. They might feel a short breath, fainting, indigestion, and fatigue. Which is, I think, typical for women, but... And schedule your CV screening. Montclair State, in conjunction with the Health Department here, we've done several heart risk screenings for the community here. And we are hoping to do a few more in the next several weeks. So Mary Beth Duffy is in charge of this program, and she is more than glad to come and to do these programs with our students in the community. We've had them at a couple churches here in town. We've done them at fairs. And we're always looking to get out and promote heart health because it's such a really important thing that sometimes people just forget about because they're, you know, so busy. So here's her contact information. If anyone's interested in participating in a cardiovascular screening, I encourage you to reach out to her. And then here's my contact information. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to take them. We appreciate, like I said, the time that we've been offered to come and talk to you about heart health. And we hope everyone gets out and exercises.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. In the last few minutes that we're here, we'd also like to congratulate Lieutenant John DeMars, Charles Bryant, and Sergeant David Palmer on their retirement from the West Orange Police Department, as well as our tax assessor, Kevin Dillon, after many, many years of service. But again, in conjunction with it being Black History Month, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Mr. Charles Bryant for his 29 years of service. So Lieutenant Charles Bryant, on the occasion of his retirement, he has proudly served the community as a member of the West Orange Police Department for 29 years, retiring on January 31st, 2023. He started his service with the West Orange Police Department on August 13th, 1993, after graduating from the Essex County Police Department Academy. During his distinguished career, he served in the Patrol Division, the Community Services Unit, and the Street Crimes Unit. He was promoted to the rank of Sergeant on April 4th, 2004, and to the rank of Lieutenant on October 18th, 2017. Charlie is a proud veteran that served in the United States Navy, and in 2019 was honored by the Essex County Board of Commissioners for the sacrifice and patriotism in defense of our nation. The Township Council, his colleagues, and friends joined together to commemorate his retirement and expressed their sincere and profound appreciation for his years of faithful service, dedicated service to our community, and to further extend heartfelt wishes for good health, success, and much happiness in the years to come. Thank you. We have two minutes. We're going to... Is it your pleasure to go ahead and start with our liaison, or should we hold those till later?
It's...
One minute? So we'll hold our liaison announcements until later on in the council agenda. I want to thank everyone for coming out this afternoon, and we'll just start in a few moments.
Can I just want to say a little something about Charlie Bryant? Yeah, just congratulations to you and the other officers. I've known you since you started. Back in the days, I think they stuck you in with my mother-in-law at the Record Department for a while. And pay your dues there, but for all you've done for our community, and that's shown this evening. Just thank you so much, and God bless you.
7 o'clock on my laptop. Madam Clark?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23rd, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2022. Councilwoman Castelina?
Present.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Mayor McCartney? She's still here? Okay. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. With my council colleagues' permission, I would like to move our executive session to now.
To now?
Yes, please.
Are we voting?
We have some information that I think is critical before we start the meeting.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna go into executive session, and we'll return shortly. So the meeting is currently adjourned. For your patience, the meeting is now called back to order. And we will commence with public comment. Just a few housekeeping rules. For those who may not be familiar with our practices, the conference agenda, I'm sorry. A public meeting begins with you approaching the podium after Mr. Fagan. Each speaker has five minutes for their comments and concerns. We also encourage you to speak this evening, but also know that you can communicate with each of us via email. but also know that you can communicate with each of us via email and telephone. Mr. Fagan?
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, actually, we have been a bit neglectful in explaining the instructions for the Zoom audience. So I would like to just briefly explain how a public comment is... How public comment works. I'm sorry. I apologize, the computer locked up. So those of you at home in the Zoom audience, you will see this on your screen, and it's a wide shot of council chambers. And the Zoom commands are lying dormant at the bottom of your screen. However, if you hover your mouse over the bottom of the screen, you will see the commands, and you'll see the raise the hand feature. If you care to comment on public comment from the Zoom audience, you simply click the raise the hand feature. Now, the way it works is we will do everyone in council chambers here first, and then we will go to the Zoom audience. You will also see the chat button. We have never used the chat button, and the chat button is in fact disabled. So if you attempt to use the chat button, you will get no results. So you use the raise the hand function. You only need to hit it once, I will see you in the queue. And there are quite a number of people in the Zoom audience tonight, so everyone will have their opportunity. A quick few reminders about public comment. As Council President mentioned, there is a five-minute time limit. Madam Clerk will alert you when you are done. Once pub, public comment is closed, it does not reopen. Council members will discuss your comments at the end of all public comment. That includes live in council chambers and the Zoom audience. And certainly, as Council President mentioned, if you have any further comments or questions, you can email the Township Council. And there is the email address, it's council@westorange.org. That hits all the council members. If you want to email them individually, their emails are available on our website. Something that came in late this afternoon is our police department was receiving calls from residents that were receiving scam calls, asking for information. And we wanted noted that the West Orange Police Department will never call asking for personal information. If someone calls, all you need to do is hang up. You don't necessarily have to record it, but you can call the West Orange Police Non-Emergency Number 325, I'm sorry, 973-325-4000 with any questions. Certainly, in recognition of Black History Month, I was given a lead which I was able to follow up on. Now, we have two high schools in town, we have West, we have one high school in town, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We formally had two high schools in town. That was West Orange High School and Mountain High School. We know that the first graduate of West Orange High School was Anna Easter Brown. But this is new information, that the first black student of African-American descent at West Orange Mountain High School, the high school I attended, was this individual here, William Giles Jr., and he was class of 1966. I did a little research and I confirmed that. Now, it's also interesting to note, if you look at the current logo for the high school, you will see that the two former high schools, West Orange Cowboys and Mountain Rams are represented, and I think most people overlook that. Currently, up at the high school, I have a display of Mountain High School memorabilia and West Orange High School memorabilia. And as again mentioned, I mentioned those two schools came together to form the West Orange Mountaineers of today. Two things worth noting is that President's Day is February 20th. All municipal offices will be closed. The commuter jitney will not run, but there will be trash and recycling pickup. And another thing that might be interesting to note is on the website, there are streets under construction. Now, they're not over, under construction tomorrow, but you might want to check that list to see where your street, if your street is affected, so that you can plan ahead according to your schedule. The other thing worth noting is that on News 12 New Jersey, my friends at News 12 New Jersey visited West Orange this morning on Tony Caputo's coffee tour, and they visited Harper's Cafe, which was a very nice surprise in town this morning. Laura Van Dyke, our Senior Services Coordinator, also asked me to mention this play, Torn Asunder. Opened February 2nd, and it will run through February 26th. But the senior services on February 16th, they are, they have tickets, $15 per person, and that's at a reduced rate. Now, this play is set in the, in the years leading up and immediately following emancipation. Of course, that would be the... 1863, the year of Jubilee. The anticipation, anticipation, emancipation, actually was released in November of 1862 to take effect January 1st, 1863. So it's a very poignant and certainly poignant play for, to recognize for Black History Month. I'm sorry for stumbling over my words there. And if anybody has any questions, this is my contact information. Jay Fagan at westorange.org, you can call, you can call me, 325-4133 in the office, and I will be glad to answer any questions or direct you in the right direction. Council President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. We always appreciate you and your wealth of information regarding West Orange. If I can, please, by a show of hands, ask if you are interested in coming to the podium for public comment. Can I just see how many people in the room? Okay. Councilwoman, former Councilwoman, if you'll please approach the podium. We'll give you a courtesy of starting us off, thank you. You're quite welcome.
I have to say, can, can everyone hear me? Wonderful. Hello, everyone, council members and to the public. As you all know, or some of you may know, I am your recently former council member. And also, the council member who brought cannabis to West Orange four years ago, when I was told by some other elected officials that I was committing political suicide, I was not. I was looking to offer an opportunity for us to be able to, A, create desperately needed revenue, or at least to provide some relief on our tax, from our taxes. But also to provide our residents the opportunity to participate. When I spoke to the mayor, he immediately said we would write an ordinance. That ordinance was created by then-Mayor Parisi, our legal department, Mr. Trank, Mr. Moon, and our Chief of Police, and myself. It was then approved by the governing body. Followed, that was the creation of the task force. I made sure to have stakeholders that did not support cannabis. My former council member colleague, Casselino, did not support it, but it was important for me to be able to have her voice on the, on the task force. We had Fire Captain Yassin on the task force, zoning official then, Jonathan Redwine, who had children in every school. And we had a business owner in town as well that would join us on our task force meetings. The task force always listened as a whole and as an advisory committee. That advisory committee made recommendations to the governing body, and the governing body approved those recommendations. So I say this to say, when you hear certain council members up here, as you did, those who were paying attention last meeting, say that they were told or they did not know, they don't have the luxury to say that, because this governing body approved that ordinance. So what they're telling you then is that they are approving ordinances without understanding or fully reading them. That's not acceptable. They ask for your votes, you have to hold them accountable. Also want to share that the resolution for recommendations of support that were issued. I want to know, and like I asked the council during the last meeting, how do they intend to choose whose license, I'm sorry, letter of support do they rescind or revoke? It's capricious and it's arbitrary. And again, I will remind you that you are inviting a lawsuit. What we did was offer residents in this town and in neighboring towns an opportunity to invest in an industry that was new, that would help them grow generational wealth that for most people of color, women as well, have been marginalized for years. This is their opportunity. And for this council to now say, we are going to backtrack and revoke or rescind resolutions, it's just, it's a horror. It's a horror. I am more than happy not to be sitting on this council with you all. I am. I cannot believe that we're even having this discussion. Let the process play itself out. Let the process play itself out. Everyone here who has applied has expended hundreds of thousands of dollars already, without even opening a store. I don't understand the justification for this. If they, well, and also the task force has been disbanded. So for those of you who were looking for Phase 2, and Phase 2 was when you received your license, you would come back to the task force, and we would ask you for more specific information. If you're a cultivator, what type of odor mitigating system are you using? If, if we don't have your standard of operations processes, we want to know that. We want to know your accounting, we want to know your banking, we want to know your security, very in-depth details. But we don't even have that process anymore. So I want to know from the council, how are we moving forward, if we're moving forward? I really just do not understand how we can disenfranchise people of color, women, veterans. These are the applicants that we have supported. And how you can sit up here today, by the way, it is Black History Month, as we saw when we opened. So happy Black History Month for all of those applicants who have been approved and now stand here, not understanding what is going on, I am so sorry. I wish things were different. However, I will ask the council to please let the process play itself out. Allow them the opportunity. And this scare tactic about kids walking in front of a cannabis store, you can't get into a cannabis store without showing your ID when you first walk in. Then there's a security guard, then you have to go to the back. When you make your purchase, you show your ID again. Children are not going to pay $25 for a joint, they're just not. And if this town was so concerned about our children having access... I, I'll finish my last sentence.
I can't, Councilwoman, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
They should have cared about that long ago, because kids have been smoking pot for a very long time in this town.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate your... But I'm going to ask... I'm just going to ask for a show of hands, as, as if you are interested in coming to speak. I don't want to, I want to jump around, but I just want to make sure when I point, yes, sir. Yes, I'm sorry. When you approach the podium, if you'll also give us your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Council, members of the public. My name's Theodore Flowers, and I'm actually here on behalf of West Orange Wellness. It's one of the cannabis applicants who was graciously awarded a resolution in March of 2022 by this council. They, they actually purchased the property at 26 South Valley Road, where they will be building out their adult-use dispensary. Just a little background. I have the privilege of representing a number of applicants in the state of New Jersey, including licensees. Represent one of the original cultivate, one of the original verticals in New Jersey. I represent multiple 2019 medicinal marijuana permities, as well as multiple adult-use permities. So I have the benefit and the privilege of working with the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, Department of Health, on different matters. West Orange Wellness is really excited about continuing its stroll with the township and its project. It is a social equity, women and minority-certified business on the, by the state of New Jersey. As I indicated, it purchases property and is also represented by Ken McPherson and the Gibbons Firm, who received planning commission approval for the property. They have a conditional permit, and they have a conversion application pending. They're in the process now of completing their investigation with the state, and God willing, will be in the final stage to receive a final permit shortly. As I indicated, they did receive a resolution graciously from council. It was great, I had the opportunity to appear by Zoom at that, and in multiple conferences back in March of '22, and was able to work with Mr. Moon during that process. I continue to work with the CRC, speaking today with Jesus Alkazar, who is the Director of Governmental Affairs, great guy. Worked with a number of CRC representatives from compliance to governmental affairs towards licensing. I also was able to speak with Mr. Trank, worked with Chief Abbott on behalf of West Orange Wellness in terms of submitting all the required documents back in 2022. And as I said, we're really excited about being part of this process. In, in coming today and working with my client, who unfortunately, Vishal Patel, who is the lead representative for West Orange Wellness, he's got an infant and a three-year-old marauding his house right now, so I'm here on his behalf. But I know one of the issues that I believe has come before council is whether or not, in the licensing process, that the town can actually issue a local license while there's a, an application pending with the state. And there is nothing in, in New Jersey's law or the regulations regarding whether or not the town can issue its own local license, contingent upon approval, receiving a license from the CRC. I know that the CRC requires a resolution from the town, which West Orange Wellness has and is proceeding with. I know that there is something, there is a provision in the law under NJAC 17:30-6.3, which provides a municipality an opportunity to identify a preferred applicant, a preferred licensee for its town. It's not a requirement by the town, but it demonstrates, in my experience, a little initiative in terms of what the municipality wants to do in setting up this program, which I think is one of the, which in West Orange could be one of the greatest, one of the best programs in the state in terms of how carefully it's been crafted and how much interest there is from the town. As I said, there's not a requirement, but if it's something that the town would be willing to do, West Orange Wellness would be really excited to receive that local approval and support and a local license at the next council meeting. I believe that concludes my comments, but any questions, more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you. The side of the room? Yes, sir, in the back? Thank you, your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Brett Carroll, 34 Kalanover Road.
I'm sorry, can you speak a little louder, I couldn't hear that.
Yes, can you hear me now?
A little bit, but try putting both together, thank you.
This better?
Yes.
Okay. Brett Carroll, 34 Kalanover Road. I'm here on behalf of this one too, okay. I'm here on behalf of the Chemistry Project. My partner Talia Young is here with me as well. We are also...
I'm sorry, the clerk did not hear your address.
34 Kalanover Road.
Kalanover, thank you.
We are also one of the applicants that got approved by this board. And quite frankly, we're a little confused about what's going on here. On December 20th, we got an approval from the zoning board for our building at 455 Pleasant Valley Way. But then last meeting, apparently, you guys tried to rescind the building because there was a changed ordinance without proper prior acknowledgement. And this is the third time now that we have gotten a building just for it to be rescinded for some reason. The first time was 216 Main Street. We were told that it's too close to a church. It was also never listed in a redevelopment zone that should not include cannabis until after we had purchased the building, and it was not posted anywhere. Had we known about that, we would have never went to go try to get that building. The second building was 24 Park Avenue. We had a letter of intent, and yet somehow other applicants were still able to submit for that building, in which the owner leased the building out to another applicant. And now this third incident where, like I said, we had the building and approved it by the zoning board, just for another week or two later, ordinance was changed. And now the building that we just got is no longer in compliance with the ordinance. As I'm sure you guys all know, there's a lot of time, a lot of money, and a lot of resources that have been... that have been divvied up over the past however long to try to continue this process. And this is now the third time that a mysterious setback has has, you know, come upon us after we have already put the resources in to try to secure a building. And even now, as we've all talked about, uh you guys are looking to maybe rescind some licenses. And we fear that our project is one of the licenses that might be rescinded because we don't have a building. And it's, how do we, you know, how are we going to be rescinded when it seems like we have been denied a building? And so I've lived here my whole life, K through twelve. I went through the West Orange School System. I went to school in Ohio. I came back here. My parents still live here. I live here. I wanted to do this in West Orange because I love my town. And I thought that this would be a great opportunity to bring economic growth to my town and to the people that still live here and the generations to come. And I just feel hurt really. Because like I said, it just feels like I have to jump through hoops and our, and our group has to continuously jump through hoops. And every time we reach a hurdle, there's another one. And we just don't feel appreciated. We want, we want some answers really because, again, this isn't cheap and this isn't free. And we are all hardworking West Orange residents. Uh most, most of the people on our, on our board are West Orange residents. We live here. We we, this is not just to make money. This is something to help everybody. So this is something that we need, we need answers on. Um I just think some of this is unethical and unfair. And so this is the, that's what we want to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you, Mr. Garrett.
Awesome, awesome. Hello, 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 City Council. It's great to meet you guys. My name is Brandon Wyatt. I drove up from Washington DC. Um I'm a civil rights and business attorney. I work with the Minority Cannabis Business Association, a group called the B C B Mastermind, and some other national civil rights organizations. I was extremely disturbed.
Can I have your address? I know you said Washington DC.
Okay, it's fourteen twenty-eight W Street.
Okay.
Southeast Washington DC.
All right, thank you.
I have some friends in the West Orange community and in New Jersey in general who have really, really uh stood forward and stood tall and working on the resolutions and the information that's been passed, not just for social equity but for business equity and to correct some of the financial and economic disparities in cannabis. I've been across the world um studying cannabis for the last twelve years. I started with US Customs Drug Force and Policy. Sometimes someone's background does help. Um I come here as a practitioner of the medicine. I've seen it heal a lot of people, help a lot of people with ailments that still yet have um yet fully been understood, realized, addressed, even with our healthcare system, taxes, insurance. I've yet to understand how someone can have an alternative for medicine um that harms them less, but they have to pay for it. It's not covered under insurance. But we have to cover one thing at a time. Um I come here to urge you guys to make a decision that's informed. Um it seems that you guys have lost your cannabis task force. Um there is a thing called malfeasance, right? When you make decisions and you don't have enough information, though you're in a responsibility or the position to find it information and present it well. Um at this point, several major civil rights organizations and pretty big attorneys are looking at you all in the city uh due to your prominence and ready to sue. It's not a game. Um it's not a joke and the livelihoods of the individuals in here are representative of it. Um it's a hush, hush puff of great folks. You guys will see it all in the news, right? Um and I don't think there's any other right or wrong with what you guys are trying to accomplish different from other towns or or citizens. But you have to do that with information. Um it's best for city councils to protect themselves, issue a study, issue ordinance, do something that puts you in a position and doesn't just show that actions were taken arbitrarily um capriciously that looks to harm disadvantaged groups of people um that other decisions were made from. I just hope that you guys can see that light um at a minimum and before you act on something that could detrimentally affect and cause a lot of consternation in a small town that doesn't seem to need it, um at least part for a study. Um get your task force back before you make these kind of decisions arbitrarily. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All the way in the back on this side, sir. Thank you. Your name and address for the record.
First thing first, Thomas Kelly, and uh I'm at three twenty-two Gregory Avenue here in town. And thank you for recognizing me. Um maybe shifting gears a little bit from some of the commentary we've heard from some of the uh other uh folks here in attendance. I want to talk about the closure of the library. On Monday, the thirtieth, I sent an email to the mayor and all the members of the council. Um I've not received a response to date to that email, so I thought I'd start off by reading that email out into the record. So the rumors are true. The library is closing for an indeterminate period of time with one and a half days notice. This is unacceptable on a number of levels. First is the short notice. Second is the complete and total lack of transparency. Third, there's no explanation offered for the premature closure before the new library was out, ready to be opened. And fourth, and I think most importantly, you're taking away a critical resource from our most vulnerable citizens and their children in the middle of a school year. The situation, in my opinion, is completely unacceptable. I expect you will be hearing from many others about this situation. The only acceptable remedy, in my opinion, is to keep the library open until the new library is completed and open to the public. I encourage you to review the posts on the West Orange four oh one one page on Facebook to get a feel for how my fellow citizens are reacting. And I signed it Thomas Kelly, a twenty-year resident of the Gregory neighborhood in here in West Orange. Now, the timeline is very disturbing that there was basically a day and a half's notice given from the time a decision apparently was made to close the library and the actual closure of the library. Um you know, this has been a somewhat controversial subject here in town about the moving of the library. Um it's taken a long time. I understand it's over budget. Um but to pretty much pull the rug out from underneath the folks who probably need that library most is, you know, really something that I wish the council would really reconsider. Um Questions in my mind are, you know, what triggered this sudden announcement? Right? Do we need to vacate that property? I would imagine that's probably the reason why. Why was there no contingency built into the sales agreement? To make sure that we did have a continuity of service for the citizens of West Orange for the library. Um The other question I have um is what's the status of librarians? The announcement says that they will be available through the end of the month. Right? What happens to them afterwards? You know, the the announced opening of the library is quote late spring. You know, based on what's happening with the construction over there on Rooney Circle. Late spring in most people's mind, I think, in the township right now is probably the end of the summer, if not late, you know, potentially into next year's school year. You know, this is a really critical resource. If you've been in the library over the years and seen the folks that utilize that resources, there's a lot of people in our town, hard as it is for some of us to believe, don't have internet, right? Don't have the the space and the quiet time that the kids need to study. You know, that is foremost in my mind when when I think about what's going on, you know, with that whole situation. Um and then finally, shifting gears again a little bit more, you know, I understand there's a letter out from the mayor um regarding the situation at Rock Springs, that it was sent to a very select number of adjoining property owners. Um reading that letter that was again posted on the West Orange four oh one one, you know, it sounds as though there's some pretty dire things going on over there, right? Rumors that the restaurant's going to close, there's some kind of resource, you know, monetary issues going on. You know, is this not a situation that should be brought to the attention of citizens at large? I mean, that, again, was a somewhat controversial acquisition by our township. It's done. There's nothing any of us are going to do about it. But I think it definitely behooves the council and the mayor to keep the citizens informed about what the situation there is in there. Um you know, to be blunt, I see a lack of transparency between what's happening with some of these situations in town and the citizenship. You know, we have lived in twen- for twenty years in West Orange. We have loved the township. My daughter went from K through twelve. She was phenomenally well-prepared for the life that she's living right now by going through the West Orange schools. I want to make sure that that continues for the next generation of folks in town, right? So that they can have the same opportunities and they can enjoy the same success that that our families had here in town. And, you know, I I would just encourage all of you, you know, don't be afraid to share the truth with the citizens of the township, right? We're pretty tough. We're pretty resilient, right? And some of us have got, you know, brains in our head.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I feel like.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nordia Gibbs. I reside at two oh six Tremont in Orange.
Thank you.
I've I've been here a lot for the past year, pleading for my application for my business to be seen, pleading for a resolution of local support for my proposed cannabis business. And nine months later, I got that resolution. And to think after waiting and investing everything, that it could just be revoked because of a change of heart. I I don't even, I don't, I might, I'm brain, honestly, I I can't. I can't process that. It's been a week and I still can't process it. Like it's, and even if it's not intentional, because you're, you're trying to go, to do good by the residents, I I'm I'm scared it's going to cause more harm than good if this process doesn't play out. And even those that are granted to push through, that process might freeze for them because of what's going to happen if this just doesn't play out. There, you know, as I said last week, there there is no going back. We we committed to West Orange and we thought that local letter of support was West Orange committing to us to go the whole way. I mean, I understand there, there are some uh reservations from the residents and, you know, Michelle, to your point, I get it. It was in the middle of COVID. Everyone was home worried about their children and, you know, wearing masks. But we're here. So I I I I'm hoping there's a different way that we all can benefit from this. If we need to do another round of interviews for the residents that have questions because they missed that process. I'm open to that. Whatever questions they may have because they've missed that opportunity to voice their opinion, I welcome that. But to go backwards, that's not progress. That that just, that that can't be the solution. That cannot be the solution. Because if it is, we're literally getting nowhere. Like I I'm, I'm hoping there's another way that everyone can benefit from this process. Keep us moving. We're welcoming questions from the residents that are concerned about our businesses. You've you've missed the presentations. I understand. I'm I'm open to more questions from anyone about anything about my proposed business. Pure Natural Vibes. Nordia Gibbs. COO. Good night.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gibbs. Yes, sir.
Thank you, members of City Council. My name is Ramondo Aviles. I reside at five 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 Mount Prospect Avenue in the St. Luke. I'm here in support of the Gibbs family, particularly in the name of this influential gentleman, Donald Gibbs.
I'm, your name, if you'll repeat your name.
Ramondo Aviles, AVILES.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm also the Executive Director of New Jersey Cops for Kids, nonprofit organization. Some of you may remember seeing the organization for Western St. Patrick's Day parade when this past summer, as they served as honor guard at the West Orange Dominican flag-raising ceremony. I'm retired Assistant Sheriff's Officer, who spent almost ten years working undercover with the Office of Running Security when we followed narcotics task force investigating domestic and recreational drug trafficking. As some of you have seen the effects of drugs in our communities firsthand, I feel when the state's council is concerned about how the Spencer's may be, uh what they're doing in the town and the effect that they have. In nineteen twenty, we attempted to follow the US Constitution, banning transportation and selling liquor for thirteen years. Despite all the legislation limitations, our mission is difficult to enforce. Like liquor in nineteen twenties, we now venture into uncharted waters. I'm sure a few members of the orderies can remember, when you were sixteen, seventeen years old back in nineteen seventies, how easy it was to walk into a liquor store and buy beer without identification. There was very little enforcement. Every member would say, we learned our lessons from the, from the school of hard knocks. Laws were put into place. Enforcement eventually stepped up. With the resident vehicle accidents, we raised the age to, by liquor from eighteen to twenty-one. Now, recently, when the state began to crack down on businesses selling cigarettes to minors, our schools still have intense programs to educate our teenagers on the dangers of abusing alcohol, smoking, vaping, and drugs. And this, we will see you, we will discuss it again. But like liquor and tobacco, marijuana was here to stay. The efforts of this government should be concentrated on continuing the education of, to our children on the dangers of abusing these substances. When there is ring dispensary or table dispensary, it should not be issued. We should be talking about how these dispensaries are going to be held accountable for assisting with the educate, with educating the community. Uh Pure Natural Vibes. Should illegal bootleggers use methanol to make their alcohol? This causes the death of thousands annually in the New Jersey metropolitan area. Ring dispensaries is only going to provide an advantage to the lo- to the local illegal street dealers. Those names today are taking advantage of our youth by promising to give them a greater high at a, at a, at a greater price. The problem is that these street dealers are lacing their products today with much, with a much deadlier product than ethanol. They're using fentanyl. Last year, this is counted alone. There were almost twelve hundred overdose cases. Three hundred and forty-seven resulted in death, two hundred and ninety-seven attributed to fentanyl. And I'm sure if these dispensaries open, those numbers will drop drastically. A few years ago, I was approached by the owners of Pure, Pure Natural Vibes regarding their interest in venturing into the cap, uh cannabis business. We need to work here to provide educational seminars to our teens of minimum fourteen years a year on the dangers of abusing marijuana. Mr. Gibbs, who was also an enforcement officer and serves as a sergeant in our country's air force, comes in and talks to the children about the dangers of substance dependency, withdrawal symptoms, cognitive impairment, psychosis, anxiety disorders, and the potential of addiction and impair, and impair concentration and memory. We recently completed our twenty-fifth class on impaired driving with over eighty high school students from watching these classes right here. Like welding clubs, the dispensaries are here to stay. During the businesses, as the New Jersey U N D C does with liquor establishments, and I believe in supporting extreme penalties for those that violate the laws that govern these establishments. We also need to hold these establishments accountable to the community. Like Pure Natural Vibes, those establishments should be, should be prepared, prepared to go back to the communities by assisting and educating our young people. In conclusion, Pure Vibes has asked us to partner with them by additional natural, uh edu- educational resources here in West Orange, and we will be to go within one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you. I have someone in the back that's raised their hand a couple times. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council and residents. Uh my name is Cheryl Murray Powell Esquire. I'm the, uh, I'll give you my address. Thirty East one twenty-fifth Street, New York, New York, one zero zero three five.
And your last name one more time.
Mary Powell. Yes, thank you so much. So I'm a cannabis agricultural dietary supplement trade attorney. I've been practicing cannabis law for seven years. Um in my seven years, I've spoken to many commissions and councils like, councils like your own um across the country from Nebraska, Iowa, Alabama, Louisiana, Georgia, the Carolinas, New York. Um and I know that it's not an easy job. Um I have found that fear is combated only with education. And I'm not here to tell you how to do your job or what your job is. But I know we can all agree that it's a responsibility to make informed decisions um, based on new information. And also making sure that we don't harm those who are already socially and economically disadvantaged. Uh, when we talk about cannabis, it's really important to remember that it's a plant. It's a plant. Uh, I I hear reference to it as a drug, but those days are behind us. There was a lot of propaganda, misinformation, brainwashing, which led us to seven decades of prohibition. Now that that's in our rearview mirror, we need to really focus on cannabis as a recovery tool. Cannabis is a recovery tool when it comes to addiction. It's a recovery tool when it comes to illness and and chronic disease. And it's a recovery tool when it comes to dehonomy. By restricting access to patients, by restricting access to the business opportunity for your residents, you're turning your back on an opportunity. And I don't think that's the intent here. I think we want to grow economic opportunity for the city. I think we can look at the headlines with all of the tax revenues, all of the community reinvestment dollars, um, all the additional volunteers that, uh, take part in community based on community impact plans. And we've learned over time that we are improving our communities and we are able to contribute to higher education as well as, um, educating our our youth. Uh, when we, when we talk about our youth, and I'm a parent myself, um, my, my 11-year-old is here in the audience with me. So you may wonder as, as a parent, why would I drag my son across state lines on a school night? Because this is important. And I want him to know that it is essential that in our, in our work and in our lives, that we need to be on the right side of history. The right side of history is about expanding access to not only cannabis as, as a tool for recovery, but cannabis as a business opportunity. And it's heartbreaking to think that one of your residents who spoke earlier invested time, effort, money, hope in something that was signed off on and to feel that that's just been ripped away from, from her and her team. That doesn't ring true. It doesn't resonate as the objective of this council. So the good thing about, uh, the work that we're, we're doing, we're all doing is we're, we're not in an operating room. We can turn the steering wheel around and really take on the new information and make an informed decision. Often, our opposition, and that's people who are in favor of access to the plant, will use children as a shield and as an excuse. We need to be courageous and not utilize our children because if we really are concerned about our children, we would be concerned about what I see when I'm walking my son to school. And he knows what it means when someone is running into the street saying, somebody call the police, call an ambulance. That means someone's ODing on the side of the road while he's walking to school. So let's utilize cannabis as a recovery tool. Let's allow our responsible professional business owners to lead the way as a tip of the spear to a new era where cannabis is demonstrating the truth of healing and where we can really contribute and recover from the pandemic and recover from the health inequity that we've experienced in this country.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
We appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Cheryl, for that. Good evening. My name is Precious Osagie Eresse. I live on, um, 229 McWater Street in Newark, New Jersey.
You'll spell that last name for us?
Yes, it is O-S-A-G-I-E hyphenated E-R-E-S-E. I am the co-founder and chief operating officer of Roll of Life, Inc. We are a cannabis tech delivery and retail company based out of East Orange. So I've been in the area my whole life. Um, we are also the first black-owned CBD delivery company in the state. And we've had the honor of being nominated as the New Jersey Minority Business of the Year and Diversity and Inclusion Champions of the Year, along with numerous other themes, including hosting an expungement in East Orange that served hundreds of SS County residents. I also have the honor of serving as the Minority Cannabis Business Association Communications Director. We're the largest nonprofit trade association supporting cannabis operators in black and brown communities. Now, say all this to say that I've also been in the industry for a very long time. I am also an applicant in the city of East Orange for a Class 5 retail license. So I completely understand this process. I was one of the first people to bring cannabis to the city. I was actually working in the Public Information Office when cannabis was ringing off and I was telling my mayor, we have to get on this ASAP. And it took years. It literally was the last second before they actually started to put ordinance together. We went through three iterations. We went through two cannabis lawyers before we even had anything to show. I even referenced the West Orange process often to our city to show that there was progress being made in other cities. So with that said, um, being called here today by my colleagues in the cannabis industry, I just felt completely disheartened that there is the potential that folks who have worked extremely hard and, please note, this business, this new industry is extremely difficult to enter as a person of color. You are raising millions of dollars. You are sacrificing retirement funds. You are sacrificing so much of yourself to do something to build generational wealth, not just for you, but for your city. What we're doing is a lot bigger than us at the end of the day. And that's really what made me want to come into this industry and even start waving the flag. I am Nigerian. I had to set up a PowerPoint presentation to explain to my parents why I am leaving a Columbia degree to enter the journalism, I mean, to enter the cannabis industry. So I completely understand. What I can't fathom is sitting one of the applicants down and saying, we're taking this back. That alone is earth-shattering, even hearing that. And I haven't even got licensed for anything yet. I'm still in the dogfight myself. But to even think further ahead that I can put that much work, that much effort, and the intent being good, but just being told, no matter what the, I don't even understand what the process would be like to line seven people up and say, or however many, um, and I don't want to be incorrect with numbers and say, oh, you three, no. You have to understand, you would need to literally give a Supreme Court dissertation as to why the why not was there. Or to just be really open for litigation and you'll just stall the process. Like many people said, the fear of the unknown is really what has stopped the cannabis industry from really growing. Like, I was completely surprised that there was even an industry. I'm from East Orange and if you guys know, you know, we have the East Orange, West Orange thing. It's a little different in East Orange. So I've seen what the wrong side or what the legacy market, illicit market had done to my community. And I wanted no parts, honestly, my co-founder, and many people know our story, had to ask me twice before I actually joined the business. But the biggest turnaround for it was understanding that there's an opportunity here to bring change. There's an opportunity to reverse the war on drugs, understanding, like Cheryl mentioned to me, who's, again, thank you so much for that, was just from misinformation. So again, I really just want to urge this body to take into account that so many people are here. We came from DC. We got the call. And I know they're on Zoom too, and we, we moved because we can't stand to see something of this magnitude happen because, honestly, and if it did, we want the New York Times, CNN, we want everyone here because that's not the spotlight we want on cannabis, but it's what, what we must do in order to bring attention to what's good. Again, truly consider the work, the time that these professionals are doing to stand up a business that is extremely, extremely difficult for black and brown people. And to remove that opportunity, to put your mind to something years ago and then have it in your hand, not even almost have it, like me, actually have it in your hand and then be told, no, that can shatter somebody in ways I don't even think you guys can think to fathom, not professionally, but also personally. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
Talia Young, 57 Ridgeway Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey. I have such a huge smile on my face right now. I don't know if you see it. I'm trying to contain it. I am the 51% owner of Chemistry LLC, a minority woman disadvantaged business that has a support letter from this municipality and is being threatened to be revoked because my third location, as my partner Brett said, is being considered not having the, um, ordinance requirement, even though we received an ordinance approval letter before. But while I drove here with trying to figure out where and how and what to compose as an argument, as a strategy, to get this august body to understand where and how I'm feeling and what is a strategy to move forward, I'm putting you guys aside because I just had an opportunity to witness three black minority businesses come here and say, we saw, we had foresight, excuse me, five. We had foresight. We understood what was coming. We have generations of hurdles and obstacles, um, that prevent economic opportunity. Our family, our kinfolk, our neighbors have continuously been threatened by authorities and industries to keep us from here. And we are still ready to stand here at the drop of the dime. Travelers from DC, come from Brooklyn, come from Harlem, to advocate the fact that we will not be able to keep barriers from this industry and black and minority people entering this industry. So I'm happy. Confused? Yes. Because I also am the one that hosted a Juneteenth conference or summit for 900 community residents and paid $60,000 to have fireworks for a community-free event. For the second year, I've had Black Santa in our downtown area, allowing diverse opportunities for education and representation in the holiday. And I, and I pay taxes on three acres of land and educate my children in this community. And I'm trying to understand how this diverse women-led, with a mayor, women-led, can sit here and try to figure out how to pull and rescind my license. So I'm going to take the joy that I see here, encourage it and embody it. I, if I can say anything from my six years in policy on the federal level, six years in working for Community Development Corporation, now leading the largest black arts education um, in the state, organization in the state, and being raised by an amazing mother and father, I'm going to take all of this and keep going. I don't understand what you guys are doing. I don't understand how you can sit here and say, my constituency doesn't want it, and I am your constituent. I don't get it. I don't get it how you can have an, a, a, an, an entity that spends time in understanding the industry because of the nuances of the industry, and then you pull it back and say, oh, we didn't do it right. And we're not giving further notice to that. And I don't understand how this is our third location and you, again, as a body, find ways to take it away from us again. So in the, in the energy of black history and the, the focus of not having the institution of bodies of government and historical economic barriers, and even sitting in this room when you see, and I'm just going to be very blatant right now because it's the hours late and I got to go home and feed my kids. You come into these government offices and all you do is see white men looking at you. I just looked around and I saw generations of economic depression. Though you may not be in a part of it, may you not understand it or get it. But what you do have is the opportunity to change it, however you see fit. And that's the power of economic opportunity. That's the power of a democracy. That's the power of having a local council and local people, residents, investing in their own community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Yes.
Good evening. Brent Draper Scott, 75 Nestro Road. I'm, uh, here to discuss two things. The first is in regards to the zoning board proposal, uh, that's been being considered tonight.
Can you just move the mic? We can't hear you.
Can we start the clock again? Thank you. Thank you. How's that? I'm here to discuss the, uh, the zoning board proposal that's before the council tonight. I'd like to point out that the ordinance was amended in 2016, not 20, not 1960. Indeed, a current member of this council was serving on the council at the time. New Jersey is one of the top five best-educated states in America. West Orange is one of the best-educated towns in America. There are 50,000, not 5,000. And it is outrageous to suggest that qualified people cannot be found to serve on boards and commissions. And therefore, we have to keep with the same people, not each year, but decade after decade in volunteer positions. That is outrageous. There are five people elected to the Board of Education, which is unpaid. It requires a lot of time. It requires a lot of themselves, but they do it. There are five people elected to this council. It doesn't pay much, but you're here. And you're giving your time. Thank you very much. I, it cannot be true that in one of the most educated states in America, in a time that has some of the best educated people, where our children are being taught by favorite scholars in the schools, that we cannot find people to serve on boards and commissions. That cannot be true. Change is necessary for civic participation. It is good for me to me that before this body is a proposal to bend the rules to fit one man, to change the law instead of obeying the law for one individual. Don't bend the rules to make it fit one person. But as our directive is written, has already been violated, it would be wrong to bend the law and interfere with the people with action. By our means, we examine what terms determine that's what the individuals appointed them. Change the law to make an exception to one person? No. The second matter I want to address is the cannabis matter. Uh, the cannabis task force held only one public hearing, being Zoom. One hearing is insufficient input for the residents of this town. Regarding the expectation, my dentist, easy dental, is in my very building. None told them. None told them. They found out. One more decision. Seven dispensaries is too many. The ordinance reads four. And although I think four are too, is too many, let's at least not go bland it. Slipping a dispensary in one of the main streets adjacent to the historic corner is too close to Washington Elementary School, in my opinion. While I support decriminalization and legalization, this does not mean that I support placing a dispensary indiscriminately and in the appropriate areas. There are lots of businesses we don't just put all over the place, from chemical factories to strip clubs. We don't just stick them anywhere. But please, this is the quality of life. It's about the appropriate amount of parking. It's about foot traffic on sidewalks. The sidewalk is spoken to all of us. We have seen it from other towns. Lots of blocks where people have been taken into buy cannabis at one time or another. And again, I support legalization and decriminalization, medical and recreational use. That does not mean I run a cannabis shop on every block, in every neighborhood, near every school. I'm irrelevant. I'm hated. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Is there anyone else in council chambers? Yes, please come forward.
Sheila Levkowitz, Pleasant Valley Way. The trust that constituents have in government is directly related to the public's perception of fairness. What is fair? Do people have the chance to give input? Is information available? Is it used to make decisions that are complete and accurate? Are clear decision-making criteria applied equally to everyone? A fair process is critical because people are more willing to accept a decision that is not fully consistent with their self-interest if the process used to reach the decision is fair. A fair process does not permit speakers to insinuate that someone has hidden motives. For their hidden motives, for their point of view or for any given topic. The West Orange Council needs to aim higher to ensure fairness. We speak of equity. People should be treated differently to compensate for different circumstances. But equity does not end there. It is not what is deserved. We must have proportionality. Proportionality means that people are given opportunities and resources that relate to the contributions that they can make. There has to be an equality of opportunity. When giving a letter of support, the council looked at the contributions of each business and what they can make to the good of our town. Another consideration is, can our town be home to an unlimited number of businesses and have the expectation that they will all have their best chance of succeeding with so much competition? We don't want to set people up for failure. Tonight, the council met in executive session. I don't know if they're going to meet again on this issue this evening. The council has a chance to give special time to working on this cannabis ordinance today and in the future. I pray and I ask each one of you, look at what the potential resources that these businesses can offer for our town. How many can coexist and survive and be profitable at the same time? Ask yourselves that how you can represent the many constituents who urge you to protect the safety of our children. Ask how a satisfactory level of safety can be achieved with the law you are about to craft. My suggestion to you is to allow all businesses who were given a letter of support to move forward at their current procured locations. Let the ordinance read that there will be up to four cannabis businesses in town at any one time with the exceptions of the ones with letters of support that we are permitting to move forward. I have no map. I asked for it, but I have no map of our current businesses at this time. But I urge you to allow the businesses you've given a letter to support to, to move forward in their process to establish a business. Do not hold them accountable for more than two hundred feet zone because that was not part of the process when they apply. The map may bear out that all these locations are already placed in a safe range from buildings and open spaces that children frequent. Moving forward, make the cannabis ordinance clearly establish a one thousand-foot zone from buildings and open spaces frequently utilized by children. West Orange should seek to apply the highest standards it can to protect some of its most vulnerable citizens, our children. Personally, I would have liked more than a thousand feet. I recognize that that may not be feasible, but I haven't yet seen a map. So when you do see a map, please see if it's feasible to extend the radius from a hundred to a thousand feet. Moving forward, the map may show us that we have enough room in town for any four cannabis businesses to operate at the same time at locations in our town that will not interfere with a one thousand-foot radius from certain buildings and locations frequently used by our children. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levkowitz. We appreciate it.
In the back.
Good evening, council and members of the public. My name is Corey Dishman. And I reside at Llewellyn Avenue in West Orange, New Jersey. Allow me to thank everybody that came out and supported for all the cannabis companies in town. We do appreciate that. I want to say that our company does, in fact, not support the motion to reduce the number of cannabis companies in town. Rather than combat this issue with opinions and emotions, what we did was something similar what Precious was referring to with the PowerPoint presentation. So we put together a PowerPoint presentation for this evening. Unfortunately, we were not allowed to present that this evening. However, we are working with West Orange to provide a workshop in the upcoming weeks that will hopefully alleviate a lot of the misconceptions that are being tossed around right now. My biggest concern is that education can help alleviate a lot of the stigmas attached to cannabis, as well as help guide us with our decision-making process because it's almost like the blind leading the blind when you're making decisions about something you don't really know much about. So we don't want to just educate the public, but we want to educate our elected officials on cannabis a little bit more. And you know, whenever we do get that workshop scheduled, I'm sure that council president and the members of council will do their due diligence with informing the public and letting you guys know when that workshop will take place. Other than that, I just, I really just appreciate the outpouring of support. And I just hope that before you judge us and condemn us for something that shouldn't even be on discussion right now, but before you do judge us, at least take the time to research and see the value that we can actually bring to this community. We're not your enemies. We are here to do some phenomenal things, and I don't see the liquor stores doing it. I don't see the bars doing it. They're socially accepted, and that's all we're looking forward to hopefully achieving one day. So I thank you for your time. And thank you to all those that are in support of cannabis in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dishman.
Is there anyone else in chamber? Yes, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Rachel Percy. I live at Eighth Mellon Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey. I, based on what I'm hearing and the little that I know already, it appears that there were seven approvals for local licenses. But there were still many hoops that had begun through to actually get a license. So the ordinance under which those approvals were given actually said you could only have four cannabis businesses in town. So however, it also did say in writing the law that other than those four or in counting those four, you need not count micro businesses. So if in fact, my opinion, I'm not sure, but I think that it's kind of clear that if the town council approves seven and three of those seven are micro businesses, then they acted under the law. If they didn't, if there were not three micro businesses, then they did not act under the law. So I don't know if someone here can tell us this goes to transparency. The public, me, have no idea who was approved for what, in what category and where. That is kind of outrageous. I don't know what's going on. Why isn't it on the website? Why do I have an agenda? Why am I reading ordinances when I have no clue what you all pass? I don't even understand how I can see what's good or what's not good. So I do support Ms. Levkowitz's suggestion that the seven or six plus the seven that does not have a location can continue to be approved. However, with respect to the one that does not have a location, I would say that that has to meet the distance of the forthcoming changes to the ordinance. And I too, based on free zones, the federal government has chosen one thousand feet. They've studied this and they believe that it's okay with one thousand feet from our parks and from our schools, anywhere where children do congregate. And we're including houses of worship. So at a minimum, please change the two hundred feet to a thousand where a particular location has already been approved. And it's less than a thousand grandfathered that one in as well. The last thing I want to be sure is that the entire ordinance is coherent with respect to micro businesses. So one, there's two different ways, different suggestions. It might be worth reserving two of the current seven or two of the future for two micro businesses because even the state legislation does say they want to encourage micro businesses. And that's the guy is ten percent of what you approve should be, not a law, but recommendation should be for micro businesses. So you can either use grandfathering language or just change your four to six in the current version and just say with two local licenses specifically reserved for micro businesses. Period. Easy fix. So the thousand feet, the grandfathering issue, and whether what the town council did was legal because I don't know about the cash investments. Because if what the town council projects, this one did, was not legal, then that you could be sued because of that as well. So just to put that first.
Thank you, Ms. Mercy.
Hello. Good evening, council. I'm Whitney Oldham, representing Dogwood Green at Five Central Avenue, West Orange. I am here representing Dogwood Green. As I said, we are a small, diversely owned, women-owned, disabled veteran-owned applicant. We received a letter of a resolution back in March of twenty twenty-two. And I would just like to state for the record that should any of these resolutions be revoked, it would be absolutely devastating to not only me and my partners, but the brilliant other applicants in this room. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oldham. We appreciate you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to come for public comment? It's very hot in here. Mr. Fagan, can we open the door? Thank you.
Paula Weinberg, five forty-five Mount Pleasant Ave. Hello, thanks. What, I'm smiling too for everybody that came here. Thank you so much. I really love it that you said that we like to hide behind children because that's kind of the only thing I really wanted to come here and say today. I am looking for a micro business in wholesale, which has not been opened up yet by the CRC. So I kind of feel like I'm already told, even though I've lived here fourteen years, you don't get a chance because it wasn't even opened up. And now you guys are stopping the people who are already in. So obviously, you know, I may have to go to another town, but I am here saying that I do think that the unlimited micro business was a good idea because it is allowing people that make a smaller income, that live in that neighborhood, to have a business, to get a chance to be in this market. I, the hiding behind children thing bothers me because I did start using cannabis as a child. And honestly, I kind of regret it. I know that might be a surprise, but I regret it. I, as an adult, I know what I should be using and what my medication should be. As a child, I really did not. And you're right, children shouldn't be using drugs. I don't, I didn't want my kids drinking. And there's no way I would run a business where I would ever, ever advocate for children to be using it, but they are. So what my feeling is, is what everybody's saying, it's about education. And that's what we really want to do is we want to make sure that there's programs that kids can come to and learn about it. I bet you that if I had learned more about the plant when I was a teenager in the seventies and knew about why I liked it, what the medication part of it was for me and what I shouldn't be doing, and maybe I need more CBD and most of that. If there was more studies about it, I think that I wouldn't abuse the plant as a teenager, which I did. And as an adult, I know better. So this is, remember, adult use. So don't be afraid that our kids who are already going to experiment are going to be all of a sudden, because it's legal, smoking all over the streets. They already are. And we need to make sure they know that what they are getting. It's better if we actually are studying this plant more because it does have so many good uses to it. And I can't even imagine what they were putting in it in the seventies, but what they can put in it now, like you said, like fentanyl and stuff scares me. So I just want to say I would love to have another chance as a micro business to open up the licensing for the different ones that are coming out. I really wish good luck to all of my fellow people that live in West Orange. I'm so happy. I want this. I want this city to thrive. I want to see all these empty buildings and all these empty offices filled. I know just from being from Canada and being there, you're not going to see any more crime. You're not going to see people hanging all over the street, rolling joints. You're not going to see that. I've been there. And so this is a very expensive, very, very, it's a very tough business to get into and it's very regulated. So for the people, I do understand what you're saying, being concerned about children. I have children. I'm concerned about them too. But this is not, this is something you're hiding behind. It is just not going to happen. Thank you so much for your time, everybody. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Yes.
James Jackson, One Ashley Road, West Orange, New Jersey. First, I want to start by saying I too, I appreciate all my friends and colleagues that came out here in support of understanding, you know, what was happening. Honestly, I have so many esteemed friends and colleagues that said so many pointed to things here tonight. I don't need to go quite as heavy as I normally do. But James Jackson, I'm the CEO and founder of YourCanna LLC. We are a black-owned micro cultivation company headquartered here in New Jersey that received a resolution of local support on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two by this council, by a five-oh unanimous vote. I am happy to announce that we are on the CRC's board meeting agenda for tomorrow to be approved as an annual license, the first who has that award in town. And as everybody claps, I don't think you understand how good that feels because I'm tired. This has been a process that I've prepared for for years to come, along with not only making sure and finding partners with like mind and coming together. Along with not only making sure and finding partners with like mind and coming together. I have a passion for making sure that my community gets brought along and has the same opportunity in this industry, which is why I'm very intentional and our company is intentional in staying black owned. Really quickly, I thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed amendments to the ordinance pertaining to cannabis entities. I appear before this council in the spirit of transparency, candor, trust and collaboration as we chart a path forward together. I acknowledge an ordinance of any kind as a contract between the community, both private and business alike, and each of us as individuals with said community. My CFO, Demetrius Brock, who is also a resident here in town, has managed multi-billion dollar budgets, engaged in several M and A activities, written policies and procedures, outlining internal SOX controls, data governance, payment approvals, and been in charge of budgets of 500 million and above. In short, we truly understand that documents may be written, expand, contract, restrict, loosen, encourage, promote, protect, clarify, and so on, based on who has the pen and who is sitting at the table. One of my asks is that a cannabis, as a, as a member of the cannabis business community, we'd be given the opportunity to meet and work with this council or it's, or is design me in addressing opportunities or concerns that impact all stakeholders in the spirit of seeking to understand before being understood. Absence of the ability to do so results in the proverbial question as to why. For example, capping, capping licenses with four versus for full scale and unlimited micro. I thought one of the primary goals was to promote and support small businesses, business ownership, which is the backbone of the US economy. Regardless of the council currently, regardless, the council currently has the ability to manage the number of licenses approved by simply not approving. It sparks the question of, of what concerns are being addressed for whom and by whom. Otherwise, it may be construed as a whimsical amendment, which serves as a barometer for how we do anything is how we do everything. I'm not sure that every member of the council understands the weight that a decision like the one you have in front of you today bears. I think in hearing from a number of individuals who have licenses here in town, we're given an opportunity and I feel like that opportunity is, is being pulled out from under them. You guys have, have, have the livelihood and opportunity for economic empowerment for a number of your community members in your hands. That's a, that's a heavy weight. But you also have to understand the stigma free town that we claim to be, right? For everything except cannabis, apparently. The constituents, your constituents who have chosen to make the investment into the community have chosen to choose this community as their business. You, you, you have the responsibility to give them the opportunity to see their process through. In no situation in my life have I ever seen something voted through and you can just say, hey, stop, hold on, just playing. Let's bring it back and re-vote it, right? If that's, if that's the case, a number of, uh, I'm sure a number of people in the community could say, hey, let's give you guys two more shots, right? Let's go back and see if we can re-vote, right? That's, that's not the process, right? With that being said, I do thank everybody for coming out this evening and progress is a real thing. The, these two young ladies who are, as far as I know, yes, yes, you. The, the biggest opponents of cannabis have told you guys that they also agree with what everybody is saying here today. Everybody should get the right to go through the process.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We appreciate you.
If there's anyone else, of course you, Mr. Paglisi, but I just wanted to make sure there was no one else. You wanted to, okay, come on.
I will be very short because I did forget my glasses again, so I apologize. My name is Shayna Emilius. I'm on here on behalf of Congress and Donald Payne Jr. I live at 540 Broad Street. I'm just here to observe, but one thing I do want to commend all of the applicants. I mean, this was some powerful testimony. I had no idea that all of you have went through this. We've been hearing it throughout, you know, our district with different towns and so forth. So I just would hope that the council would kind of take into consideration all of their efforts that they have done. And I know that, you know, you'll work through this. You know, I also commend you, young lady, with the hat, black hat, in regards to your comments in regards to 1,000 feet. I don't know, there's a conference of the town here. But again, you know, we are, you know, here in, in regards to the children. I know a lot of people, children, I'm speaking on behalf of myself now, not on behalf of the congressman. A lot of kids that are treated with various diseases with CBD. And I've seen, you know, people have sent us videos throughout the state in regards to, you know, ensuring that, you know, we, the congressman fights on their behalf. You know, I just would hope that if I can get your email, I'll give you my card and I can send you some of that so that you can see some of these videos. They're heart wrenching as well. So again, I just want to say thank you and I hope you guys will consider all of the testimony.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Ms. Emilius. Mr. Paglisi.
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. And if I've lost my email that I was going to read from, so just hold on. Bear with me for one second. Uh, so, uh, good evening. I did bring some visual aids if you've been, thank you. Moving up in the world here. So in July 2022, the county announced the results of our Essex County Community Health Assessment, the first such undertaking in the last 15 years. The responses we received and the data collected is helping us get a snapshot of the healthcare issues facing our community and will enable our public health office to be more proactive when planning for future emergencies and public health initiatives. This information also was shared with municipal health departments to assist your local efforts as well. Through our Healthy Essex Coalition, which includes the county and all of our municipal health partners, we are now conducting a community voices survey. The responses we receive will help us better understand the concerns and health needs of Essex County residents. This is a little different from the health assessment conducted last year because the questions now are more about gauging the wellness of our respondents and what they see as being needed to make our population healthier. We are asking residents ages 18 and older to complete the survey, which just takes a few minutes to complete. The survey can be accessed by a QR code, which is on the flyer. It is also on, it's in English, Spanish and Haitian Creole. It will also be on the county website, which is essexcountynj.org. And all the information collected will remain confidential. What we're asking is if West Orange as a community can help us reach out to your residents and help us gather more data so that the results we get are, are more comprehensive. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paglisi. Okay, Mr. Fagan, we are looking for public comment from those that might be on our Zoom call.
Yes, Council President, we have 65 attendees this evening and so far six attendees with their, seven attendees with their hands raised. So for the benefit of the Zoom audience, anyone wishing to address the Township Council, please raise your hand and you will be in the queue. Sally Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road. On behalf of our Green West Orange members, I have three immediate issues. One, that Zoom access be made permanent for all residents to all town councils, zoning, planning board and all commissions. We've brought this up before. We have not heard yet that you're going to do that. The public will be harmed if the township eliminates Zoom access, so please confirm that it will be continued. Number two, the proposal on tonight's agenda to allow repetitive terms without limits for the chair of the zoning board should be denied. The current law designates term limits for that position. We need term limits to remain in place so that there's fairness, allowing other zoning board members to chair the meetings. And this should also apply to the planning board where the current chairman has been on for numerous terms. Number three, something new. I would like you to consider a planning ordinance to limit the number of fast food restaurants in West Orange. The public should know that there is a proposal for two more drive-throughs in the former China Gourmet property on Eagle Rock Ave. One is a Popeyes and another is unknown. Again, both drive-through fast food restaurants, 33 trees are proposed to come down. We need to take action now with proper planning for the present before we find ourselves to be a town of pot shops and fast food joints. I believe that residents who understand that we're in a historic town would like to patronize attractive, unique local businesses. Montclair, which has a smaller population than ours, has dozens of good and unique dining experiences. So I'd like to ask you to get a planner, an independent planner to guide us for the future of this town as quickly as possible. And if we can hopefully not allow these fast food restaurants to open up in that particular location, I think it would be better for our town. So we certainly don't want to have an imbalance of fast food businesses over better businesses in West Orange. So thank you for your attention.
Susan, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Delinko, Pleasant Valley Way. Good evening. I have been a medical marijuana patient on and off for the past seven years. After hours of virtually attending and listening to multiple meetings about cannabis dispensaries, I have come to the realization that many of you have not been in a dispensary nor understand how one's, one operates from a purchaser's point of view. There are two types of dispensary clients, medical and non-medical. On the rare occasions when you see a line in front of a dispensary, it is for the non-medical users. Dispensaries limit the number of people that can go inside at one time, and that is why there is a line. Medical users are always given priority and have special hours where only they can go into this dispensary. When you go into the dispensary, you must show ID, be it a driver's license or medical marijuana card or other ID issued by the state. Without that ID, you cannot enter. No questions asked, no excuses, no ID, no entrance. The person checking the ID and allowing you to enter the dispensary is usually an off-duty police officer or another type of security guard. There are two ways to purchase cannabis. You can order online and pick up your order, or you can just choose from what is available. If you are a medical marijuana patient, you are limited to the amount that you could purchase in a month, which is up to three ounces, depending on the need in a conversation with your doctor. If you're a recreational user, you're limited to the amount you can buy. At the time of purchase, you must show your ID again. Payment is done with one of three methods, cash, debit card or an app called Can Pay, which is a debit card based app. Just as an aside, there are only six banks in the country that can legally accept cash from cannabis dispensaries and they have their own systems for picking up the cash. Some of these, some of the distributing and blatant, I'm sorry, some of the disturbing and blatantly false rumors I've heard from people in the meetings include people using cannabis in their cars as soon as they leave the dispensary or selling it to other people. I have never seen in the seven years I've been a medical cannabis user, people using cannabis in their cars at the dispensaries. There are multiple signs on the exterior of the buildings warning against smoking on a property. If you are caught doing that, you will be arrested. I have also heard about parents or people who are worried that cannabis will be sold on the street. That's ludicrous. The cost of cannabis from a dispensary is astronomical. Cannabis is sold by the gram. There are 33 grams in an ounce. A gram averages $15 to $25. The average price of an ounce of flour is $600 plus 12% tax if you are a non-medical user and that costs $672. The street value of an ounce of flour is around $300 to $350. So to even think that someone would be selling from a cannabis dispensary just makes no sense at all. No matter what you think street weed is, no matter what you think street weed is very easy to get. So there's no reason to jump through hoops to get dispensary cannabis at twice to three times the price. What seems to be important is not having a dispensary within 200 feet or even 450 feet of West Orange High School or other schools. At West Orange High School, there are two stores within the range of the high school that sell alcohol, vape pens, cigarettes and lottery. Students go in the store during school hours, yet that is acceptable. But a dispensary 450 feet away that is guarded by a security officer or an off-duty policeman that has absolutely no contact with students is not acceptable. St. Cloud School has a liquor store abutting the driveway that also sells alcohol, vape pens, cigarettes and lottery. And it's in middle, middle school, has multiple restaurants and bars that serve alcohol and a large new liquor store within the 450 feet range. This indiscriminate distance that you have come up with makes no sense. I have heard people complain about crime and a dispensary will bring more crime to the neighborhood. Again, this is a false statement. The last thing a dispensary owner wants is illegal acts on their premises. They don't want bad actors hanging around and will promptly have them removed. People say it's not acceptable to have these dispensaries in my neighborhood, yet not one person has given a reason why. We no longer live in the time of reformation.
Time is up.
Okay, sorry. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Link, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Edward Reitman, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Ed Reitman, Moore Terrace, West Orange. I have three points I wanted to raise. One is I'm in, I want to reiterate and support our Green West Orange's proposals for term limits on the planning and zoning boards and agree that we need an independent town planner. Second, I want to say that I'm appalled by the library closing and the move from residents who are most in need and least able to travel across town to a facility that is now apparently going to be out of commission for some time before the new library even opens. And third, I want to say that I support the medical marijuana folks who've been speaking this evening. Other towns have done it successfully. It's a, not only is it a good source of revenue, but it addresses a lot of social justice issues that the folks who are applying for businesses should be able to get some redress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brinkman.
Sumara Ortiz, please state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name.
You pronounced it perfectly. Thank you. Sumara Ortiz, 91 Edgewood Avenue. Good evening, Council. Just like to say that as my understanding of your rules go in regards to how your motions are approved, there's a procedure to everything. I know that we've heard ad nauseam this evening, excuse me, how your procedures are followed and it's all about the processes, right? I, I'm not familiar with the weed game, as the kids like to say. I'm not a weed user. I don't smoke it. I'm not concerned. It's all about the processes for me. And if these small businesses, these minority businesses were approved for these licenses and they've worked so very hard to get them. And now in the ninth inning, you are pulling the plug. That is where my issue comes in. To change the rules and to undermine the opportunities of the very constituents who you are representing seems a bit horse and back of the cart for me. I know that, as others have mentioned, surrounding towns are doing this and doing it very well. So reneging at this point of the game doesn't make a lot of sense without any real data to support the reason for why this model won't work here in West Orange outside of the not-in-my-town reasoning. It's ludicrous to me. You're opening yourselves up to a lot of litigation. You're squeezing out small minority, small businesses based on what? Fear? It all seems too familiar. Big business is always shoving out small business. This is something we're all familiar with, and we all know that big business is monopolizing the market, even in this weed game, revenue rules. So I ask the question again. As someone who understands all too well, what big business can do, why not here? No, we're not going to have, I'm sure, a weed store on every corner. Not that the six or seven applicants, I'm sorry, I lost count, would cover every corner of West Orange. We're way too big for that. These small businesses aren't flush with cash. They don't have a hedge fund waiting in their back pocket if you say no. They don't have, you know, someone backing them for the next venture. How is this going to work for them? They did all that they needed to do, and you are switching up the process at the last minute in the ninth inning. The processes have changed and you are back-dooring this game on them. That's so unfair. I can't imagine. And first you begin with this weed thing. What next? This isn't how and what they voted for, right? This is not how town processes should work. If you tell me I've got to follow these one through ten rules and I follow them to the letter, then should I not get what I get at the end? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time, Ms. Ortiz.
Todd Hughes, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Todd Hughes, one-one-one-zero-one Saddle Court. I live in Upper Marlboro, Maryland. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a father of two young girls, an engineer, and a cannabis advocate. I currently sit as the chair of the board for the Minority Cannabis Business Association, a national trade association. Our mission is to create equal access for cannabis businesses and economically empower communities of color through policy programming and outreach initiatives to achieve equity for communities most impacted by the war on drugs. I've been an advocate and a business owner in the industry for over ten years. And all of my years, I've never been in an industry that encompasses more compassionate people. Cannabis is an industry of compassion. And also cannabis, to me and to a lot of my colleagues, is a medicine. No whether, no matter if it's medicinal or adult use, business owners care about their constituents and their patients. Cannabis is, has, and always will be a medicine. And just some proof to this, right? Data is always important to consider. A great friend of mine and colleague, Dr. Harriet Comedy of Coriah Healthcare Solutions commissioned a twenty-sixteen clinical study published in the Journal of Pharmacology and Toxicology that resulted in a determination that cannabis is an antagonist to addiction. That means that that cannabis assists in the remediation of things like opioid addiction, which we all know has run rampant in the U.S. So it's good to de-stigmatize this. But even if we look back into nineteen seventy-two where the Schaefer Commission did a study on the harms of cannabis, and they also concluded that cannabis did not cause widespread danger to society, and it does have some medical use. So I stand before you today to voice my opposition to the proposed decision of cannabis licenses in West Orange. I believe that these proposed actions would not only harm local businesses, but it would also have a devastating impact on the minority applicants who have been historically unfairly impacted by the war on drugs. We all know that the industry is ninety percent run by white male individuals, and it's just data. We have to acknowledge it. This industry represents and presents a rare opportunity for our communities to prosper economically and break the cycle of systemic discrimination. I think rescinding these licenses not only takes away the livelihoods, time, money, energy that people put into these businesses, but also sends a message that their contributions and successes are not valued in your community in West Orange. Furthermore, the decision undermines the will of the people. Across the country, data has overwhelmingly shown that there is support for cannabis legalization, both in medical and recreational purposes. And it disregards the numerous studies that have shown the benefits of regulated cannabis markets, such as increased tax revenue, job creation, and the reduction of criminal activity and not the increase. So in conclusion, I strongly urge the West Orange Township Council to reconsider the decision and to support the rights of the minority-owned cannabis businesses in your city and your state. And let us work together to create a more equitable and inclusive industry in West Orange. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Cheryl Mark, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Cheryl Marklinger, ten Sheridan Avenue, West Orange. Good evening, Town Council, and thank you for your time tonight. I'm calling because I have some concerns. I know I've spoken before about the cannabis ordinance. And really, you know, my family's been in this town for over eighty years. I myself have lived here a little over forty years. And despite, while I appreciate the folks that spoke this evening, many who are not from West Orange, unless you actually live here, you don't know the West Orange community, you don't know the township. So while I appreciate their participation tonight, while saying they're not here to tell you what to do or what your job is, they kind of are. As someone who's involved heavily within our community, I find it very disappointing that not one person that spoke tonight, and I apologize, I did jump on after, I believe, a few speakers came up to the podium this evening, but not one person spoke to their involvement with the children in this community. And so someone like myself, who is heavily involved with the children in this community, I'm not hiding behind them. I'm not using them as a wall to put a stop to pot or weed being sold. I completely understand. While I personally disagree with the use of it, while I personally considered it a gateway drug and have seen the effects firsthand, I'm here to speak tonight about the ordinance and allowing the increase. I believe Ms. Lefowitz mentioned about the thousand feet. I fully support moving the ordinance to be a thousand feet from schools, public places where children frequent, such as parks, places of worship. Everyone has a right to a quality of life. I myself am allergic to pot. I am just as entitled to have the airspace and not have to inhale it, being with children and being in those spaces. But my more concern is really for the children. Appearances mean a lot. These kids are easily influenced by what they see. So while I understand that the market is coming into West Orange and I understand that, it really comes down to location for myself. What I would really hope that the township will look at in our town council, I urge you to look at the ordinance and the spacing. We see, I did see that you have schools. I did see that you have places of worship. I would ask that you include that to increase it to at least one thousand feet, if not more, from schools, like I said, parks and places of worship. I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marklinger. Mr. Fagan, is there anyone else on the Zoom call?
Yes, Council President, we have six people with their hands raised.
Thank you.
Kevin Martin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Council President, members of the council, good evening.
Good evening.
I have a comment pertaining to the process of going into executive session. According to the Byron Bear Open Public Meetings Act, subsection ten, colon, four, dash, thirteen, B of the New Jersey statutes annotated, the resolution to go into an executive session must state as precisely as possible the time when and the circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session of the public body can be disclosed to the public. That has not been done. Will it be done after the meeting to rectify this error? And if so, please tell us when, and if not, please tell us why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Mr. Fagan?
Computer is a little slow. DJ, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name, your full name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is DJ Howard. I live on Hampton View Lane in Tampa, Florida. While I am a Florida resident, I am the National Community Program Director for multiple cannabis organizations and also work with a lot of folks actually in that room and across the country to educate our communities on the proper use of cannabis, both medically and for adult use purposes. These programs, like I said, supported by hardworking people, some of which are in that room or here on this Zoom call, help minorities overcome barriers in this cannabis space. We've heard several people kind of point out a lot of the disproportionate consequences that black and brown people have had to face over prohibition and this war on drugs. Barriers occur at all different levels for patients, consumers, business owners, and even from a legislative standpoint. Tonight, we're speaking particularly about these business owners and the economic opportunity and what was put in place and the work that they did in order to ensure that they satisfy all the different qualifications that the council put forward in order to have their cannabis business be able to operate. These people have taken the time to not only put in their hard work, sweat, equity, and then as well as their financial burden that went into this very expensive industry and becoming a part of it. They've done much to be able to have these businesses in West Orange County. I've heard a lot tonight about people concerned about education and something that I must share with you. These business owners have knowledge and education that far exceeds most people in the room, most people who are unaware of cannabis and what cannabis can provide for people. They have to, in order to operate these businesses and to be business owners, have that knowledge. And as you have heard, many of them are passionate about how to bring others along and continue to break barriers. Through the educational programs that I run and that I've worked with, we've helped children who use medical marijuana in a number of different ways to treat a number of different conditions. We've helped educate young folks, including college students on down to younger students who might see cannabis or might see something around. But more important than seeing, it's knowing and having that education. And I think rescinding these applications are going to take away the opportunity for a lot of these business owners to be able to educate not only the children, but people on this council and in the community about how cannabis can be of benefit to them, and even if it's not of benefit to them, how it's of benefit to people around them. Above all, this process should be fair and equitable, and this process should not, I do not support rescinding these cannabis licenses for those who have already received their letters of support and a resolution from this council. I believe that those folks should go ahead and be grandfathered in if you choose to change, you know, distance from schools and other things moving forward. I totally understand you well within your right, but I think that those folks who already have satisfied those requirements should be able to operate and should be able to give back to the community and to the West Orange community in the ways that they plan without having their opportunities rescinded, really for no reason other than decision from the council to kind of change up what was already agreed upon. Thank you, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Mick, please state your full name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Yeah, my name is Mick Erickson. My address is sixteen Maple Avenue. And first, I want to second Mr. Malanga's request. Doesn't seem like our time was worth much. On the cannabis, I echo most of what the cannabis dispensaries are saying. We shouldn't be limiting to these people that have already been proved. As a disabled person harmed by the drug war, I want in on these new opportunities in the recently legalized industry. However, listening here, the future of West Orange is not looking very bright. It appears as those approved by the town might not even get to participate. So when will those behind them get any opportunities in this massive new legal market? On the ordinance, I disagree with being exclusive in who gets to operate businesses in town, especially people who have been here like twenty years, forty years and can't participate. Section five-three-eight cultivators need to work five dash thirty-four dot eight. Cultivators need to work twenty-four hour operations, not bankers' hours. I think this parking spot might limit some of the older, more densely populated areas from being able to participate in this industry. And does that count for street parking? You know, and also I think mass transit stops should be within walking distance, and that should be a bigger priority than parking. And section twenty-five dash twenty-four dot two, two, four in parentheses, does this conflict with five dot thirty-four dot eight? You guys exactly right. Children should not be anywhere near this. Dealers send kids to school to deal to other kids. Legal licensees don't do that. Put their license at risk. Dealers don't care who they sell to as long as the cash is green. And dealers handle their disputes in the back of dark alleys at the end of gun barrels, not legal laws and like legal businesses. Let's remember, the primary reason cannabis prohibition was enacted in nineteen thirty-seven was because Henry Anslinger criminalized the plant and started a war on those with the least. Reefer Madness was his bible. Some of Anslinger's documented quotes, you smoke a joint, you're likely to kill your brother. There are a hundred thousand total marijuana smokers in the U.S., and most are Negroes, Hispanics, Filipinos, and entertainers. Their satanic music, jazz, and swing result in marijuana use. This marijuana causes white women to seek sexual relations with Negroes, entertainers, and others. You know, West Orange has a rich, rich cultural jazz history. You think, what do you think Anslinger thought of all those people? You know, he even stopped using the word cannabis and changed the spelling of marijuana, changed the H to a J to make it sound more Spanish. You know, legal also doesn't equate to moral. Limits are exclusive, not inclusive. It is our opportunity here in West Orange to help right the wrongs of the past. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Garrettson.
Phil Litwinoff, welcome to the meeting. Please state your address for the record, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
No, you had it perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Fagan. My name is Phil Litwinoff. I live at eleven Linden Avenue here in town. Tonight, you have a proposal being submitted to retroactively change the rules that the zoning board has to, is supposed to follow. I urge you to vote against this proposal. It is wrong, is unethical. Background. I have been in this town since nineteen seventy-seven. I raised my three daughters here. They both began their school at Gregory School with a wonderful kindergarten teacher by the name of Heidi Hoffman. Mrs. Hoffman taught the students the need to follow the rules, and that if you did not follow the rules and you broke them intentionally, there were consequences. What the township is being, what the town council is being asked to do now is to say that that is garbage, that you can break any rule you want in this town, and we will come in and change the rules retroactively so you're fine. I believe that Chairman Nowar should be thanked for all of his years of service, but it is time to move on and to administer proper rules that it was turnover of management. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lifmanoff. Thank you, Mr. Litwmanoff.
Mel Valdez, welcome to the meeting. Please state your address for the record.
Hi, good evening, council members and West Orange residents. Today is day seven of Black History Month. We talk a lot about access diversity, inclusion, and transparency in West Orange. Let's not forget that. However, the current actions and decision-making processes of this board and current administration run contrary to that. My first point is that public libraries are integral parts of our community. I'm very disappointed that our public library was closed abruptly with little notice to our residents. What is the plan going forward with the closure of the library until the new building is ready? Will there be another temporary space used in the meantime? Is there a contingency plan? What does the contract say regarding the construction of this, of the new building? What is the, what is now the current proposed opening date of ten Rooney, of the ten Rooney Circle location? Number two, why was the cannabis task force disbanded? There has been no clear indication as to why this happened. I also don't, do not agree with the rescinding or revoking of any of the current resolutions that have already been previously approved. Should we do this? We're just opening up ourselves to further litigation, which we really can't afford. And and also, it puts West Orange in a very bad light, that people cannot come here to do business because in the end, we're just gonna change the rules. I am a mother, and I've lived here for more than twenty years. I have no concerns of these businesses opening up, especially because many of these businesses are going to be opening up near where I live. I live on Elm Street near Colgate Park, and within, within a few blocks, we have many bars, a liquor store, which is literally across the street from Our Lady of Lourdes Roman Catholic Church. So I just feel that it is very hypocritical to say that now we can't open these cannabis businesses, but we do have many liquor stores, one that's literally across the street from a church. I'm also opposed to this zoning board ordinance being changed to eliminate the, the line where members may not be elected to successive, to successive terms as chairperson and vice chairperson. Mr. Noir, who is a practicing attorney in New Jersey, has served successive terms. It would be best to allow any member to serve as chairperson and vice chairperson. It should be time for others to be able to serve in this, in this leadership capacity, especially after observing Mr. Noir over the years. Also, I have mentioned this before, but the zoning meeting should be recorded and broadcast on our township's YouTube and public access channel. The reason I say this is because many witnesses have been verbally abused by some members of the zoning board who will yell and interrupt them while they're giving testimony or responding to questions. Additionally, there is a meeting scheduled for February sixteenth regarding Rock Spring. All members of the public were, of the public were not properly noticed about this special meeting. Why are residents learning about this meeting via a copy of the letter that happened to be posted on social media? Shouldn't we all be properly noticed? And shouldn't this letter have also been posted on the township website for all to see? Why the secrecy? Also, there is currently a resolution on, on the agenda for fifty thousand dollars to cover damages that occurred at Rock Spring on December twenty fourth and twenty of two thousand twenty two. Does Rock Spring have insurance? Was an insurance claim filed? Why are we paying fifty thousand dollars for these repairs? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Richard, welcome to the meeting. Please state your full name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, council. My name's Richard Friedman. I live at eleven Kovak Court and the condo association. I'm the president of the Bel-Air West Orange condo association. I would like to briefly talk about the recycling center located just off of Route ten and at half a mile west of Pleasant Valley Way. I'm not really sure if this is a business or just a recycling center, but this area has been growing in size and in usage and is affecting many of the residents who are located nearby. It has recently become noisier as it gets used more, and it emits a very unpleasant smell that anyone walking in the area can smell due to the mulch and other chemicals. The boundaries seem to be expanding all the time. It's within three hundred feet of the, some of the homes located in my association, which is less than the length of a football field. Quite honestly, it seems to be becoming a health hazard to those who live close by and decreasing the quality of life there. I think that the township needs to take a very close look at this before it's too late. Residents should not have to suffer because this is a business that serves no, I mean, it serves a good purpose, but unfortunately, just due to the nature of it, it's, it's decreasing the quality of life and making a lot of people very unhappy. Please take a look at this before it just becomes completely out of control. I really appreciate if the town council could do so. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, can you please give us your address?
Yes, I said it before. It's eleven Kovak Court, K O B A C H Court in West Orange towards the western end of the township.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Todd Dubovy, welcome to the meeting. Please state your address for the record.
Sure, Todd Dubovy, ten Burnett Terrace. I appreciate you, the opportunity to speak to you. It's the first time speaking this year. I have a few things to bring up. All of them have been brought up by others, but I'm gonna also chime in. The first has to do with the legislation proposing term limits on on the members that are sitting of the zoning board. I think that that's, that's actually a, a good thing to have. There needs to be new blood and new life and, and new thoughts brought in on a regular basis. By prohibiting or blocking or preventing new people from joining, that, that it's just, that's not governance, frankly. Not good governance. On the cannabis matter, I'm less concerned with how many the town has. I'm concerned with the process that's been followed or not followed, frankly. It's interesting to me that for, I don't, months, six months, nine months, we've been hearing the applicants have been coming to council meetings complaining about the process, asking what's going on with their applications. And repeatedly, you know, not much has been done. And now I commend everyone who's there today filling that room with bringing this to a head because it has to come to a head. Rescinding letters of support that were previously granted under a, a, an approved process, and then now talking about rescinding them. I don't think there's been enough consideration given to what that does to the town's reputation for attracting businesses. If you want, you know, this town needs to attract good businesses and, you know, practices like this and situations like this where you're talking about pulling previously approved businesses from a process. It's just, it undermines any, in, any attempt to bring in good businesses of any type. It's not just limited to cannabis. It's of anything. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the library. You know, I think this has been completely mishandled because there shouldn't be a closure of any type until the new location is open. Do we even have to raise the issue of, you know, it's already been told to us in the beginning when, when this was first brought up, that there was going to be a satellite office, satellite laboratory. Well, you know, now we're being told by the mayor that there's not enough money for, for a satellite. That's hogwash. You find money where you, you need to have it. And so I find the entire library process has been just brutalized and inappropriate, frankly, and it marginalizes the people that most need it of all. Lastly, Rock Spring. I live almost within viewing distance of Rock Spring. I never got this letter that I've seen. I find it very interesting, considering the fact that I've been trying to get numbers for Rock Spring. Not just numbers, not the operators' numbers, although those are important. I've wanted our numbers. And Mr. Gross, who's sitting there tonight, sends me eight hundred pages of photocopies of receipts and ledger pages. What a joke. You know, I suspect and expect that on Thursday, there will be income and expense numbers presented to, to explain what, what is going on there. My own feeling about all of these items that I've brought up is there's a common thread here, and that is that this shows a complete lack of transparency in this township. I've been complaining about it for a very long time. We, you know, whatever. It doesn't seem to change, and I don't expect change coming from what I have to say tonight. But thi- this town has to make, and this government, the township government needs to make a much more conservative to show us. Thank you very much.
Joyce Rudin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your address for the record. Joyce, can you hear us?
Is there anyone else waiting?
Joyce Rudin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your address for the record. Can you hear us? Any other members of the Zoom audience wishing to address the town council, please use the raise the hand function at the bottom of your screen. Joyce, you need to unmute yourself.
Final call, please.
Joyce, I'm sorry. We cannot hear you in council chambers. You need to unmute yourself. You have permission to talk. If we cannot hear you, I'm afraid that we're gonna have to move on, and you're gonna have to email the council.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Is there anyone else waiting for a public comment on the Zoom call?
Not at this moment. Any member of the public wishing to address town council, this is the last call for public comment. Council president, I am seeing one, and apologies to Joyce Rudin for whatever mishap may have happened.
Thank you. On behalf of the council and whatever technical difficulties we may be experiencing, I am also apologizing to Ms. Rudin and asking her to please email the council members with any additional concerns that she may have or to call us directly, if that is her pleasure. Public comment is now officially closed. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Sixty seven Zoom participants. While I don't have a fact-based count, I can certainly tell you that's one of the highest counts on a Zoom call that we have had, and certainly the highest count that we've had in twenty twenty three.
Council president, if I may correct you, it was sixty two at its highest point.
Thank you. Thank you for that correction. Sixty two. Indeed, we have on our agenda some items that are extremely critical to the future of West Orange, to the future of the business entities that have sought to gain opportunities here, and certainly to those who support industry, opportunity, innovation, et cetera. So I want to thank all of the advocates who have come out this evening to support what appeared to be or appears to be a change and a reduction in the number of cannabis entities that we are willing to allow midstream. Very clearly, I want to put on the record, as I did at our discussion, while I did not put on the record comments, I think it's very clear that I am not interested in reducing the number of cannabis letters of support to be reduced so that we can reduce the number of cannabis entities. I've always suggested that the process go organically, that in the event there is some other rationale why these businesses are unable to open, that that should not be the doing or undoing of this body. I stand by that. I encouraged us to, when we were concerned about the number of entities that might have an opportunity to open in West Orange, certainly I suggested that we increase the number of licenses to seven, which was equivalent to the number of letters of support. I did not and do not believe it is this body's role and or responsibility to reduce the number of entities that we will allow mid-process. I equate that to being in any type of sport or game. You do not change the rules once the whistle has been blown. I appreciate the analogy that was made when you reference my council colleagues. Let's see how you all do in the first two months, and then let's do a do-over if we don't like what we see. Basically, that's what this ordinance change suggests, and there's no rhyme or reason. There would be no rhyme or reason. There would be no legitimate reason that I could sit here behind this table and say any, many, many, mo. It's just not heard of. It's not practical. It's not fair. And I appreciate everyone who came out to not talk about the possibility, but the process, the process. What this governing body would then be ushering in as precedent is unheard of, and I, I do not agree with it. I will not support it. And it is my suggestion and recommendation to leave that part of the ordinance untouched until after every entity has had an opportunity to go through the process as we agreed on in twenty twenty one. As it is additional comments that have been made, I will still stay within my main vein and request. And if it's something that is a ordinance or resolution, we can certainly pull those and discuss them at the proper time. We've had some concerns with the closure of the West Orange Library. I will ask the administration to speak to that. We've also had some concerns about the zoning, a change and ordinance. I will certainly speak to that, but we can certainly, again, wait until it is the appropriate time because it is on our agenda. And so that we don't belabor our time here tonight, I'm asking my council colleagues to share in that same vein. We had comments regarding a town planner. Not certain how that could come into play at this point in time. Certainly, we have a planner. Certainly, he is not a full-time town planner. And we have talked about an economic development position. We are looking to make sure we do pull different areas of development and the direction of our township into better purview and perspective with having someone come in and assume that role and responsibility ability that is certainly poised to bring business into our community and to make sure we are not oversaturating ourselves with any particular industry. As far as Rock Spring is concerned, I think it is public information that there is a community meeting scheduled on February sixteen. It is not closed to the public. It is an open meeting for those residents and anyone else. Now that you all are aware and feel that there was information that was not shared with anyone, and again, I will allow the administration an opportunity to speak on how the evolution of the Rock Spring meeting came to be. So if I can yield and ask the administration to respond to those three items, it would greatly appreciate.
Thank you, Council President. In, in reference In reference to the library, we're very excited with the prospects of moving forward into the the new library in the coming months. The project is on course, in terms of the timeframe. And we, the library announced that it will be closing to pack up. In order to, it takes about a month to actually do the condensing and consolidation required to get ready for the moving vans. The moving vans will take about two weeks, and this is all scheduled around getting out of the current location before April first, and moving everything then after that, begin to move into the new location. So we're real excited about the project. We're looking forward to the state of the art library. We do have a requirement to be out of the current site in order to make sure that the site is developed for sixty-four.
Affordable housing units.
Senior, senior housing units. And so we're about the business of getting that done. Because as you all recall, this, this particular project is multifaceted in terms of the benefits that it brings to the township residents. And not only are we going to get a state-of-the-art library, but we're also taking care of our co-obligations and providing senior housing. It's a very, very important aspect of that. So we're excited about it and certainly entertain any questions, other questions you may have.
So a lot of the public came today that was concerned about the closure of the library, and their concern was why there was not a tremendous amount of notice provided. So if you could just speak to that briefly, a timetable, I know that it takes about a month, as you indicated, to pack up and relocate. And we are also trying to meet the deadline of making sure we get the tax credits for the developer who is building those. But again, one-day notice for the closure, was there, is there anything you can share?
I, I, I can't speak to the notification from the Library Board of Trustees. They met, I think, as a matter of timing of their meetings. And so that was just scheduled that way in terms of that. We met with the executive director of the library and had conversations with him about basically how long it would take for them to get packed up and then to move out. And we scheduled everything accordingly. He scheduled everything accordingly for that. We do intend, and I'm also pleased to announce, and I'm not going to get into all the details because we haven't concluded all the negotiations, but we have found a site in the downtown area that we will be, we intend to have a library services. We're going to have computer desks there, access to drop-off, and perhaps pick up books coming from the buckle system, as well as library staff at that, at the location. It'll be five days a week. Daytime hours primarily, and at relatively low cost. We're very fortunate to find the site, and we're hoping that sometime next week that that will be open.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And you mentioned the Library Board of Trustees. Could you give us a distinction between how the Library Board of Trustees functions and what role this municipal governing body plays with the library?
Well, the Library Board of Trustees, they're an autonomous body, and they run the day-to-day affairs of the library. It's not the township, the Town Council, nor the mayor, you know, has control over the activities of the library.
Thank you.
There were two other items that you mentioned.
Rock Spring, the public meeting?
Yeah, the public meeting for Rock Springs. Once Ma'am McCartney took office, it was very important for her to sit down and start looking at how to make some decisions that have been yet to be made in reference to a Rock Spring golf course. As many of you will recall, when this was proposed, there was a, a, the part of the potential use was possibly slicing off some of the property for development. That's not happened, and it's not been identified even what is, whether we should do that or not. So the mayor wants to get this, basically have a meeting with the community to where she can hear the concerns of the community in reference to any potential development on the site, what the, the community feels about that, what they'd like to see, what they wouldn't like to see, and also to advise, you know, right back to the community to get a recap of the financial status. And, you know, it's not changed significantly from where we start. We knew when we purchased the property that we were going to lose tax ratables, and we knew that there was going to be debt service on that, and until such time as we were able to recoup some of that money, some through development perhaps, and some through green acres. So that's really where we are. We're not really in a much different place than we were when we originally bought, except that we have a good three years of experience on the site, which has provided, I think, some insight to us that's important and that we want to share with the public as well. And again, as well as to hear the public's viewpoints of what they'd like to see. So part of what we're going to discuss is what the economic, the economics of the site are. And we're going to, we're going to listen. We're there to listen about the community's desires and wants and needs for the site.
Thank you. We also heard information about the recycling center. The odor, that's something that every now and then is brought to the council's attention. So we will certainly have and ask the administration to check on that. And we also talked about keeping citizens informed with the Rock Spring meeting. Is if you do not live in the Rock Spring area and you did not receive a letter of invitation, does that prevent you from attending?
Absolutely not, and we will be posting on our website a link with an invitation for the public to attend so that, you know, they will become aware of that through our normal channels of information that we distribute. Also, it'll also be on, and I believe it already is on Facebook, on our Facebook page as well.
All right, thank you. There's one other thing. And I asked about one other thing. Okay. All right, thank you. I want to thank everyone again for coming out. Mr. Fagan, Mr. Paglisi, all those who spoke this evening. We appreciate you. We appreciate your time. We appreciate your passion, and we appreciate you keeping your elected officials accountable and informed of your opinions. So thank you, and I will yield to my council colleague, Catalina.
Sure, thank you, Council President. And I want to start off this, this comment apologizing to the Council President last week. I was full of emotion. I was very cranky, and I took a lot out on her. So I want to publicly apologize to her because this has been quite the process. We're still going through it, and it's been a learning experience. I'm going to start off real quick, a couple of comments in regards to the library, not to belabor, but I'm on the trustees for the Friends Group. You know, this is exciting time for us to transition to the new library. It's not going to be perfect. And to see some of the comments here, some of the comments has been disappointing because you have people literally spending hours upon hours volunteering their time, going to help Mr. QB, help, help pack up. Originally, I think they wanted to close. I would, I don't want to give dates, but, you know, they wanted to keep open a lot, open a lot longer. And, you know, they have to get out. We have the deadlines. We have the tax credit. We've been talking about this for a couple of years now. We knew this was coming. And, but they made a decision, and sometimes you have to make the tough decisions. We all still forget how beautiful our school libraries are. So a lot of comments tonight are hiding behind the children. That's one of them. I feel that people always bring that up about the kids, and we have multiple resources in place for our children, thanks to the taxpayers of this community. So, you know, they, they've been, you know, thinking of every way possible, and could the communication have been better? Absolutely. But again, we just transitioned to a new administration. And, you know, it's only been a month, and as you know from tonight, a lot has been going on. So let's all, whoever has time to volunteer to help assist in the move, please do so and reach out to Mr. QB. I'm sure he'll appreciate any pair of hands he could get. But also, let's be thoughtful and be thankful for all those on the board for this endeavor, and we appreciate their time and effort. And same thing with the comments about Rock Spring. Mr., I know we have the resolution tonight. I know that is covered all by insurance, what's on the resolutions this evening, all the repairs, and we'll talk about that in later detail. But for those of you, I know it's getting late. I just wanted you all to know that. It is covered by insurance. And you know, Mr. Paglisi and Mr. Fagan, it goes without saying, thank you for this evening. Everyone else who came out to talk in regards to the cannabis ordinance. You know, appreciate it. I've been warning the council. I've been, you know, I, I, it's been a tough, it's been a tough two years with this, and it's been a learning process. I'm going to be honest, my colleagues here, I appreciate all your time, my former colleague, all your time you put into it. But also, I don't appreciate you lecturing us this evening because, you know, there was mistakes along the way, and I'll talk to you about them tomorrow. But to, you know, I know you're frustrated, and I hear you, but at the same token, I mean, let's, let's, let's go over what happened this past month in December. You know, a meeting didn't make the agenda, and, and we, you know, we, this all sparked from the last two applications that were put on that December agenda without notice. That, and again, you know, the council voted, everybody was put on the spot, and I think a better decision could have been made. I did not support it at the time, and that started the ball rolling this past month for all this confusion. So let's take responsibility too, because that meeting could have happened a lot sooner and got it on the agenda. And then folks would have been notified that, that those applicants were going to be on there, and there would have been better communication. So, you know, we all have issues here. But without saying that, always appreciated your time and efforts with that being said. And last week, what changed last week? Well, again, I appreciate my colleague here sending up for the state to come talk, and I'm benost to her and the gentleman from the state. We were on a Zoom call, only two of us, so it's a little hard to, for anyone to appreciate the lack of information we did receive. It would have been helpful if the state would have came in public, but they didn't want to come here in public to be questioned by us. So, you know, so that was frustrating. So, you know, we heard certain information, which was disappointing for me because some of the information I called down a year or so ago, I had conflicting information. So again, this is, it's organic. It's, it's in the process. It's frustrating as an elective official to be sitting here because I always say we're only as good with our vote on the night that we vote and the information that we have. So for the public's sake and for all the guests this evening, which I appreciate coming from out of town, that's why we're in the place that we're at. And we seem to be confused because, you know, again, we're trying to do our best with what we have put in front of us. You know, I take pride in educating myself on this matter. I do not have fear about this matter, but I am cautious about this, and I'm not going to apologize for that. I do not hide behind children. In fact, I don't, I don't think the kids are going to be going in the stores and buying it. But, you know, the parent community, the perception is that they don't want it to be where the kids hang because it's a perception that it's okay. A lot of parents are having issues, and I've had multiple conversations because it's been legalized. So in their brain, they think, okay, well, to the races, this is good. It's approved, you know. And I've talked to store owners at Pleasantdale Center. The students are there during lunch hours. I've talked to Mr. Moore about this. And yeah, are they going to be buying it from a store? Probably not. Are there drug dealers, unfortunately, in our schools? Probably so. Have they been there since I was at Mountain High School? Probably yes, unfortunately, and I know this because I used to be a school board member and had expelled children from time to time. And, and that was sad. That was really sad. But at the end of the day, we're trying to get this right. So I was on the task force. I did have the benefit of interviewing the candidates early on before they, my colleagues got to see them. And I was very vocal how I felt about the issue. I was very vocal about advocating to change the ordinance for the distance from the schools. So this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. I know the folks from chemistry were frustrated today when they came to us. And again, they came here, so I'm going to state it publicly. Early on, one of the first applications I approved, I was very impressed by them. Unfortunately, they did not secure their location. And it was unfortunate. I won't get into details on that for their sake, but had that site been secured by them, you know, they wouldn't have had to switch their location. And I've also, in that meeting, Zoom call, also was very clear how I felt about distance from a school and where this site would go. And on the task force, I made it very vocal when there was talk of that site being a possibility. I was very vocal on that call to the task force that would not be an appropriate location. So again, there are no, a lot of no surprises. You know, we talk about wellness, there's great effects, but, you know, I've also been educated and seen the documentation on some of these retail businesses. And I say to Ms. Gibbs, I commend you because you do not have a business plan to sell vapes. The other retailers have with thirty to forty percent. So we talk about health and wellness. We all know vaping is not health and wellness. So again, let's get all the facts out there to the public. You know, other communities that I've talked to, people from out of state, you know, again, they're beautiful facilities. They're beautiful. They look like spas. I don't think they're, you know, but I don't see the foot traffic coming to help. I sat there in my car numerous occasion washing a lot of these sites, and folks are coming in and they're leaving. I don't, I haven't witnessed people like sticking around the shop. Pharmacist, I would feel much comfortable with the numbers if I knew pharmacists would be mandated, mandated for them to disperse at the sites because we keep talking about wellness, and pharmacists are not dispersing this product. So again, there was mention about the liquor stores. Those liquor stores that you see and the taverns were grandfathered in. So again, if we had to do that all over again, it wouldn't be something I support. But a lot of those sites were from years ago, from sixty years ago. A lot of those stores have been there for many, many years. So again, I'm going to be supportive of grandfathering in because I know we have situations. We were in closed session. Obviously, we had legal discussions to ask about questions legally where we stand. And I appreciate the attorney that came this evening. I also appreciate some other attorneys that sent language to me to advocate, to make sure we get this right. And you know, this is, this isn't going to be over tonight. You know, we're going to keep going. We're going to keep working at it. I hope all the owners here, and I appreciate you. And I know I come up here and I say all these facts and the information, but I really do. I really do, and I hope you, I hope you know that I'm sincere when I say that. And we get you going. Good luck tomorrow. We want you to be successful. I want every business owner in this community to be successful. But this is no, there's a lot going on here, and we got to make sure we get it right. We have to make sure we get it right. And because of your dedication, I, I, I believe. And because of your dedication, I, I, I believe we will. And because we do support, support business owners, I'm going to wrap up because, um, it's late, but we didn't get to say our council liaison, uh, announcements. But I have to, I have to say Restaurant Week is March nineteenth to the twenty-fifth here in the township. And I hope all of you are out there, they're on the call tonight. I'm going to use this time. Go out and support our restaurants as well. They, a lot of them are dying on the vine because the price of food, as you know, when you go to the grocery store, and I know it's hard, a lot of you to go out to dine, but please make sure you go out and support them. And again, I appreciate our business owners. I appreciate the residents. I appreciate our parent community. Um, and the professionals that came in tonight to speak for the support. It, it's hard, but we're, we're gonna get it right. We're gonna get it right. So, so thank you all for coming down this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gabbard Michael.
First, I'd like to begin by thanking everyone that came out tonight in person and also, uh, via Zoom, um, to share their thoughts and concerns with us, uh, regarding the library. Um, and I do believe that the closure and, and notification process could have been handled properly, more properly, and I do believe the residents should have received, um, at least a month or two's notice. I don't know, you know, we can even put like a, a timeframe on it, but they should have received more than a day's notice. Um, I am relieved to hear that the administration has came up with a solution, um, right in the vicinity of where the current, uh, will now close library is located. Um, regarding the planner, I do believe that we do need an experienced, full-time, um, economic development planner. Um, and regarding, uh, Rock Spring, as the council president and BA have stated, the meeting at Rock Spring is an open, public meeting, um, to all residents. Um, and my question to the administration is, is there a Zoom option available for, uh, residents who can't make it in person?
I, I don't have an answer for you. We'll, we'll consider that. I don't know whether that's an option or not.
Okay. Okay. I think would be a great option to have for those who can't make it in person, just like we have Zoom option here, uh, in our council meetings. Um, regarding the recycling center, how often, uh, is it inspected and?
Yeah, we, we have, um, of a, a, um, paid, uh, and a professional that basically handles complaints and, and goes there and does, uh, random inspections. And, uh, on a, a regular basis, uh, that is, um, paid for by the vendor, not by the township. And so we'll, we'll, we will address the, what we heard tonight and we'll get something on it right away.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and now regarding the current cannabis.
I'm a will.
I'm sorry.
That inspection, as Mr. Rose says, happens twice a month. We get a written report with pictures that I do email to the municipal work that I thought was circulated.
It is being circulated just for the general public so they know. Yes. Yes.
You know, as, that we have evidence that he goes there and he goes there on a surprise. Doesn't, it's not a schedule.
Great.
And certainly as Mr. Rose said, if we get a specific one, he'll go meet.
Thank you for sharing that. No, it's okay. And regarding the current cannabis ordinance, I would like to begin by stating a few facts. Um, first, based on the election results in 2020, the referendum supporting cannabis was favored by seventy percent, seventy-four percent of residents. Um, the majority of voters with an outcome of eighteen thousand four hundred and forty votes for it uh, in favor and six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven votes against. Um, second, the governing body adopted the ordinance on first and second reading. Um, this ordinance has been in effect since last February and was scrutinized. Um, the governing body also, uh, issued seven letters of support. Um, there was a deliberative process, uh, done and the governing body made the, made the decision to permit these businesses an opportunity. Um, I made an oath to the constituents of West Orange when I was sworn into office and the oath was to, uh, faithfully and impartially and justly conform the duties of councilperson here in West Orange. Um, as a diverse community, West Orange has an immense opportunity to be fair and just and support economic growth for both residents and the township. It will create a great new revenue stream that will help relieve the burden on some of our property taxes. This is a commercial ratable. Um, it is a new and steadily growing industry where we're all still learning with the potential of increasing the job market by making more jobs available. Um, this industry encourages new businesses and offers us an opportunity to help micro businesses become, um, become profitable. And the legislation is written to help minority businesses specifically who normally wouldn't get an opportunity, this opportunity. Uh, you know, as I mentioned, the governing body passed this ordinance a year ago, allowing applicants to begin the process of opening physical locations in our township. Um, I, as I mentioned, uh, last week, do not support reducing the number of applicants this late in the, in the stage, um, or revoking, um, their letters of support. Um, we should not take the opportunity away from them, period. Uh, it is extremely unfair and unjust, especially since the letter of support had already been, uh, given to them. Um, you know, these applicants have invested, as you heard tonight, you know, their time, lots of money and basically their livelihoods. Uh, they should, in my opinion, believe that they should be allowed to continue with the process and to let it play out. Um, and I, as I mentioned last week, I believe the applicant should be grandfathered in and also discussed last week. If and when they do get approvals from the state and get their licenses from us in the state, every year they must renew their license. Um, so that's really important to, to keep in mind. Um, and also, as mentioned, not all of them are guaranteed to get licenses from the state. It's important to let the process play out. Um, so education, we talked about that. We heard that a lot tonight. Um, education and educating others on the facts are important. We need to share information and educate others on the cannabis industry while explaining facts and statistics. We must always make decisions as a governing body based on data, evidence and facts, not opinions, bias or personal, uh, uh, personal opinions or fears. Um, making potentially detrimental changes to the ordinance now would negatively impact these businesses by creating major financial hardships. And these are tough economic times. Um, we cannot do something unethical that also has legal repercussions. We have, if I do share responsibility, we cannot be part of a system of economic disenfranchisement because that's what we would be doing. We have to stand together for what is right. And that is our duty as elected officials and representatives of West Orange to do the right thing. Thank you.
Does that complete your remarks?
Yes, it does complete my remarks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I think, uh, it's important that we all take a deep breath. I've heard multiple comments tonight about the process with regard to cannabis. And this is the process. We are listening. We are discussing. And in that process, we have to learn from what we've gotten right and what we've not gotten right. I also, uh, want us to understand that part of the way we are held accountable, um, part of the way township voices its opinion about which direction we should go in is through elections. We have two new council members here. Um, I believe both of them were clear about their position on cannabis when they campaigned and they each received enough votes to be seated on the dais tonight. Um, their voice, the people that they represent needs to be heard too. We don't want to silence thousands of votes, thousands of voters who made a choice, at least in part, based on their position. And the last thing I'll say before I get into the specific comments is, um, I, someone, uh, or multiple people have said it in different ways that we as a council should be open-minded. And I completely agree with that. We absolutely should be open-minded. And also when those are engaging in this debate, to be open-minded as well. There's not a single person on the face of the planet that has ever lived that has never forgotten something wrong. Everyone has. It's not putting it wrong. It's what you do when you realize it. So now, oh, last thing, criticism doesn't need to be personal. Um, we've had multiple incidents in the last week where town officials have been personally attacked for doing their job, whether we agree with it or not. Some attacks, any argument you may have had that could have been valid, once you make a personal attack. And I don't care if this is received well or not, this is exactly how I feel. If you make a personal attack, I don't care how valid your argument is. I stop right there because we're not going to engage in that kind of behavior. We've seen things happen around the country and even in the state of New Jersey, where public officials have been targeted with violence because of the position they took during their job, uh, just a week ago. And I wanted to say this in our liaison, uh, um, our liaison uh, moment, but we, we, we had a castle person in another town be murdered. Now, we don't know what the motive of that was, but the fact means we've seen other, we've seen not just that act of violence, but plenty of acts of violence because people generate hatred and anger towards someone they don't personally like for some foolish reason or some goal to gain advantage or perceived advantage. And I think that needs to stop. Um, one thing, Mr. Fagan and Mr. Puglisi, as always, for your timely and informative comments, uh, particularly with regard to, uh, the play Turn Asunder at Luna Stage. Uh, I plan to, um, watch the play with my wife and my daughter. Uh, the first commenter was Cindy Brown. I'm going to respond to her first. Um, it is true that you were, um, it is true that you were, um, ensuring you were creating the task force. Um, and you made some recommendations, the task force made some recommendations that the council approved. Um, not, not all of those votes were unanimous. And there was considerable deliberation. I think to me, your address of the council, um, is divisive. If your goal is to have a better outcome, a better process, then you should engage in that vein. Uh, trying to go in and stand and pretend as if you've not made any mistakes, I think is absolutely pointless. And it takes away from the process. Uh, council members were misled about important issues. Um, it was my and other council members' understanding at the time we went through this, that we could not align with the number of micro businesses. A letter of resolution, a resolution of support rather, a letter of support, did not mean you were obligated to issue a license. And I, and I, I don't know if that is true now or not. I've heard commentary on both sides. And that actually speaks to the process because we're dealing with a new industry and the names of the road are being written while we're driving down the road. Multiple, we talked about this last week, multiple changes in guidance from the state and multiple issues that have had to be addressed in town once we've learned the information. Again, that doesn't make some irresponsible, unethical. Um, it makes them a part of the process and this is the process. There's been some discussion about inviting lawsuits based on, uh, stuff that we've done. We've been threatened by multiple, um, applicants multiple times to be sued and not just this year. Last year, when his Brian was the chair. And it takes some difficult votes because of what was done through the task force. So that task force has been disbanded. I supported disbanding, uh, the task force because one of the consistent complaints we heard all year was poor communication and lack of transparency. And I believe starting out in that vein has led us here today. Um, Mr. Flowers, I want to thank you for taking the time to come out and express your support for Western Orange Wellness. I believe he's still here. Um, I think his commentary on the preferred provider was interesting. I don't know how, how my colleagues feel about that, but it's certainly something that should be, um, considered. I thought that was an interesting, it was an interesting thought. Uh, Mr. Harold, Brock Harold, and I apologize to anyone whom, uh, I did not get your name right. Um, I understand your frustration. Um, and there were some factual discrepancies in the presentation that you made, but that does not negate the fact that you, of all the applicants, have been through uh, the most arduous process. Um, I look forward to a clear resolution soon. I don't know exactly what that will be. Uh, and for the record, I have abstained from voting for them or against them at every chance. Um, Brandon Wide or Wild, thank you for your commentary. Uh, I found it interesting how many people from around the country came out tonight to express, uh, their opinion. Um, I think, I think what's important for us is when we hear these opinions from people in uh, various places, um, it is also important for us to understand that this town of fifty thousand residents does not always show up at a council meeting. And those that have opinions don't always make them known publicly. What I said last week was, we have to balance competing interests. There are folks that are focused on social equity, as am I. There are people that are against cannabis, no matter who does it or how. There are some people that support one aspect of the business and some that support others. There are people that want it here, want it legalized or decriminalized, but not here in West Orange. We have to balance those competing interests and come up with a way to address those concerns through our ordinances and resolutions. And that's what we're doing now. Um, I'll come back to the library, Rock Spring. Um, and want to thank Mr. Aviles for his advocacy for, uh, pure natural vibes, Mr. and Mrs. Gibbs. Um, and I will echo his sentiment that they are outstanding individual applicants. And, and I'll echo the sentiment of my colleague here. Um, they were, they have been very responsible in taking into consideration the need to the community. Uh, and it's not to say the others haven't. And I, I hope people don't put words in their mouth. Uh, that is just to respond to Mr. Aviles. Um, we are responsible to make informed decisions, as some have said. And if you have any opinion, you better let us know. Uh, we can't possibly respond to every single email. It's just impossible. At least it's impossible for me. I just, they, they're just far too many. Um, but you can certainly text and phone call as well. Um, all right, I think I've covered. There was a comment about the constituency. Um, uh, those West Orange residents that spoke tonight are certainly our constituents. No question about it. The business owners that have a stake in West Orange are our constituents, even if they don't live here. No, no question about it. But again, there are many different perspectives on the same issue and it doesn't make someone monster or wrong if they don't share your opinion. And I, and I haven't said it tonight, but I've said it almost every other time. I advocated for adult use, uh, adult recreation to use cannabis, uh, rather for the referendum actually got in ballot. Um, and I did from a social justice standpoint. And I did in the church, in a Black Baptist church with a large number of senior citizens who might not normally be supportive of that. But I felt it was the right thing to do and I'm pleased to say that they did as well. Um, Ms. Lefkowitz talked about a fair process. I think this is fair. Having the back and forth, being willing to listen, um, is fair. Um, some of these are kind of redundant, so I'll let those go. Um, Mr. Jackson spoke about our need to support small business. And what I will say that the cannabis task force, uh, has gotten right um, is by focusing on social equity, social justice applicants and making sure, uh, that small businesses are very well represented in the mix. Uh, wow. All right, I think I'm going to switch to another topic. Um, all right, with regard to, um, the zoning board, we hear you loud and clear. We're going to take a vote on that tonight and, and, uh, your com, your, your sentiment has been well received. I'm sure we will take it all into consideration before we vote, um, including, uh, some of the further work that might need to be done to make these kinds of plans more consistent across similar bodies. Um, I do support an independent, uh, economic development, uh, role in town. Uh, role in town, um, to help us with some of the challenges that some folks addressed tonight. Um. Uh. Uh, recycling center, Mr. Friedman. Um, that's been, would that kid's name, Freeman? That's been a, an issue off and on for a number of years. Um, the, I will say to the recycling center's credit, as far as I can tell, and I live in that neighborhood. The smell has been, has, has gone way down. Uh, there was a point in time where it was, as soon as you walked outside, you would smell it. Uh, I toured with Mr. DeFeo, uh, the property, and he, uh, showed to me their odor mitigation. Uh, equipment, which I found to be quite substantial. Now, can we do better there? Absolutely. Can we plant more trees and buffer the noise? I'm certain we can. Uh, and so, Mr. Friedman, thank you for bringing that up, and don't be surprised when we reach out to you for help. And making sure that we get some of these changes done. Um. I think that's it for me. Oh, library closure. Uh, I think Councilwoman Gavin Michael said it, um, what? Sure. I did not win the fight. To get the best project possible for West Orange, and includes addressing some of these issues as they are. Uh, brought to our attention. So do applaud our member for quickly finding a, an alternative that. Um, can mitigate some of the damage that's being done by the, the closure. And also wants to know that folks are committed to making sure that the library, at least it's been expressed to me. That the new library gets opened as quickly as possible. I'm looking forward to meeting all of you. Uh, at the meeting at Rock Spring, so we can discuss what to do there. And council president, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rutherford, Councilwoman Scarpah. Bring it on home, honey.
As I look around and I see everyone falling asleep. I, I promise I will be brief, and instead of talking to each individual, I will address the topics. Um, I want to assure everyone that I am not speaking up here for myself. When I talk about any of these issues, I am speaking for my constituents. I get a lot of calls and I have a lot of people asking me about all of these topics. Um, one of the most.
I think you're gonna call now.
Yeah, I know. It doesn't stop night and day. You see what I mean? And it's true. I mean, I never realized when I took this position, how intense it would be. Um, but anyway, I'm, I'm speaking for a lot of people who have put me here. And in fact, one of, um, those people, a very astute resident. Actually sent me something about our township smoking ordinances. Because, you know, a lot of, a lot of our residents, particularly concerning the cannabis, are concerned about the sidewalks and. The secondhand smoke and that kind of thing. And this person, um, made me aware that we have something called chapter twelve. Um. Dash eight, which actually says that it is illegal for minors under the age of eighteen. To have an open pack, carton, or container of tobacco products, or to hold tobacco products. And he asked that this ordinance be looked at and updated.
Councilwoman, that, that's been updated.
It has been.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has.
Okay, so just, you know, this is like the level of concern I get. And the, the level of due diligence that the residents are doing. They are concerned, obviously, about, about, um. So you have serious concerns. Um, what I see here is we have two conflicting interests. We have the interest of the business who want generational wealth and want to. Engage in small business. And we all understand that. We also have the interest of the children and the families and the seniors in our community. You know, the seniors are twenty-five, over twenty-five percent of our population. So, you know, they, their concerns appear to be more about having smoke-free sidewalks. And parks, and you know, as we've heard from the chief, there's really very little way to police that. Or keep that at such, the, the, they are clean because. People are really going to be able to pretty much roam around and, you know, smoke. So I think that's really where the concern is, and we should really keep our, our eye on that. Um. What I often teach my students from the very first day they enter my classroom is. Um, to put themselves in other people's shoes. We, we do idioms and figurative language. And that the most important thing they can do is to put theirself in someone else's shoes. We talk about kindness, and that's really just compassion. Compassion is being able to look at what's in someone's heart and what's in their head and to put ourself there. So since we have these competing interests, I ask everyone to please just put yourself. In the other person's shoes. When I ran for this office, and I almost didn't. I ran because I felt that our township particularly really needed to. Understand the, what other people are thinking and feeling. And to listen to opinions of those that are very different from their own. I know as a business person, I made negotiated best contracts. I made the best business decisions when I put myself in my client's shoes and I understood what their limitations were. I knew how far I could go with them because I understood where they were coming from. And what their issues were. And I just ask that everyone, and extend the same courtesy to Ms. Matute Brown. She worked very hard on the cannabis commission. It was a crazy situation. We got no guidance from the state. I can tell you when I went on with. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino with the state representative, he couldn't even answer eighty percent of it. Not even twenty percent of my questions. Very few were answered. So I can only imagine what Ms. Matute Brown went through trying to assimilate all of this. And put it all together. So let's cut her a break too. And try to just do what's best we, we can for all of the residents as we move forward. I was a small business person myself. I've said it before. I can't imagine what it must be like. To enter a business climate like this where the rules are completely undefined. And take the level of risk that you guys are taking. And I really do feel it is a matter of fundamental fairness to fix all these problems that we have. You know, create the ordinance the way we feel, everyone feels. It needs to be created. And grandfather in those who have spent so much time and money and effort. And I really do believe that by having less cannabis entities. Rather than more, we will ensure the success of all of you who have worked so hard. Um. So that's basically how I feel about that, and I, I really want us to all just listen to each other a little bit more. Um, to Mr. Richard Friedman, the recycling center, I think it stinks every time I go by there. I don't know how much we can do about the smell. Um, I guess it's been mitigated a little bit, but, um, I guess that's something our administration could look into. I, um, the zoning, the zoning board issue. Um. Uh, Phil, and everyone else who called in on that. I really believe we need term limits in our, in our government, municipal government, and. Particularly on the zoning board, uh, and the planning board. And there's just no reason not to give. All of the residents that are on there more of an opportunity to contribute. Um, as. Mr. Scott has said, as I've gone around knocking on doors, and I did it four times in four elections. I met more incredible, intelligent residents than you could imagine. And I was always had an eye on who would be good for what committees in our township. And we have plenty of residents that have a lot of talent and can sit on these boards, and I promised. When I ran that I would put only the most qualified people on each of the boards as my appointees. And that I would not appoint friends and political appointees. That I would find highly qualified people, and I think I've done that. Um, and I would urge that we continue to work in that vein. So, um, Todd DeBowie, I think he hit the nail on the head. All of this, whether it's the library or the zoning board or the cannabis ordinance. It's all about transparency. And I think we need to continue to work together. To make sure, no matter what we do in this municipality, that there is more transparency, and I applaud. Mrs. Gibbs for emailing me and wanting to assist in educating the public. I still feel there should be a town forum where residents could come out and educate themselves. About cannabis. Not from your point of view, and I'd like to see some pharmacists and medical professionals also weigh in. Ideally, I would have loved to see pharmacists operating a couple of businesses or managing a couple of businesses. Um, but we are where we are, and we need to be fair to everyone as we move forward. And that's about all I have to say. For anybody that I didn't get, please email me or call me. Uh, my, my phone number's on the, on the town council website. I'm also listed in the book, so I get a lot of calls. So, um, feel free to reach out.
Thank you. All right. Okay, it's time to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and special meeting, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Consent.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence of the West Orange Towns, uh, Township Council appointing Roz Moskowitz Beelski. As Commissioner to the Economic Development Commission for a one-year appointment. Beginning on January first, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Consent.
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 Bills, none. Resolutions, council president, or any resolutions being pulled this evening? Council colleagues, are there any questions regarding any of the resolutions on tonight's agenda? Uh, Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just. Two comments, if that's, if you know mine. I know, I know it's late. I'll keep them short. One, uh, resolution forty-eight dash twenty-three, there was a comment made by the public this evening. About us going in, um, executive session. I, I, I mean, I don't think, uh, legal could have. Given any more information, uh, it's spelled out right there. Um, other than, you know, what we're allowed to not, not, you know, which we couldn't share with the public. So thank you for legal for that, that very, very detailed description. Uh, and my second comment, um, uh, is for N fifty-one dash twenty-three. The agreement with, uh, Mr. DeFeo, uh, to echo some of my colleagues' comments. You know, we, we, it's gotten a lot better, and, and I, I felt bad for the gentleman I didn't comment. Um, when he spoke, but I also want to let folks know, if you go to the West Orange Township app. Uh, and you scroll, uh, you swipe to the second screen and, uh, you hit Township West Orange Info and scroll down. Uh, you have right there, report of concern. So, you know, it. You could report it right there. You could report it on your computer. So please make sure as soon as you have an issue, um, to share with us immediately. You may not get somebody on the phone right away, but this works immediately. The, the council gets it, so. And we, we put it on the app because we know a lot of yous are on your phone. You don't want to go to the website, so. Yeah, the administration gets it, and then it goes over to us, but they, but they, they need to know, so just make sure you report it. But that has been better. Uh, thank you, Council President.
Uh, Deborah Michael.
Um, I just have a question regarding resolution forty dash twenty-three. I reject from the bids received on, uh, January eighteenth, just for the benefit of the public and people who may not know who are listening. Um, why are we rejecting the bid?
This, um, uh, when we received the bids in, um, we were not, um. Uh, happy with all of the terms of, of the bid, as well as. There were some specifications that we wanted to refine, and so we're asking you to, to reject them tonight so we can make those changes and go back out again.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford. Let's say Councilwoman, Council. It's, it's, I, I apologize, Councilwoman Rutherford. Any question? Okay, okay, thank you.
It would be interesting, I wasn't gonna say, it would be interesting to know what specifically those, uh, issues were that you want to refine.
I'll be happy to, uh, have a conversation with you, and certainly we can announce it after we go through the process. We, we don't want to. Provide any competitive edge to them.
Thank you. And as a point of order, as it referred to, uh, us going into executive session. Not only was it clearly identified as part of our, uh, resolutions this evening. But I also asked my council colleagues if there was any objection to me moving to, back to the front of the agenda. And there was a unanimous consent, uh, that we were able to do so. So I think that should definitely clarify any other concerns about executive session. Uh, the only other. Uh, questions or comments that I will also make is I think it has been put on the record for clarity's sake. Uh, regarding resolution forty-five twenty-three and the emergency appropriation of funds for the repairs at Rock Spring. Um, that that is an insurance, uh, item. However, while we still need the emergency appropriation, it's because bills do have to be paid. And usually insurance reimburses, uh, those expenses once they have been identified and receipts verified and, and received by the. The insurance agency. That's my personal practice. If there's any def- difference or discrepancy, I'm, I'm sure, uh.
Yeah, no, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. This is just like, uh, uh, and, and any, any property owner and getting a given time. Or, emergency things happen and, uh, the, we, we have to make repairs. Uh, and, um, you know, the insurance is something that comes along later on. Part of the process when in, in a municipality, when we have these, that we have to follow up. We have to do it right at the time because it's an emergency. We can't wait for a meeting. Uh, so, and then, so we put things together and we, as in, in order to, um, provide transparency. Uh, we bring it to the council, so we say, well, we, we spent this money on an emergency basis, and we want you to be aware of that. So. That's what this is. It's, to, to that extent, it's, uh, it's a point of clarity, uh, some housekeeping. And certainly, uh, to the extent that there's any conjecture about, uh, we, we're fully insured and. Uh, we will receive the appropriate reimbursements from our insurance company.
Thank you, Mr. Trink. Um, and just, um, so that I'm not misstepping either. I'm sorry. No, I want it, I want Mr. Trink. Thank you, thank you, but I want Mr. Trink. Um, I wanted Mr. Trink as far as legal is concerned. I'm just thinking out loud in the head, and I apologize, it is late. Um. Wanted to be able to speak to the quasi judicial zoning board, um, how the members are elected. Oh, we haven't, okay, all right.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to speak to the zoning board specifically, since that is a, a question that was brought to our attention this evening. Um, the zoning board of officers are elected. How? Could you go through that process?
Sure.
Thank you.
And this is, the, the way zoning board members are picked is different because it's by mandated by the state.
Mr. Trank, can you pull your microphone?
Sure, absolutely. First person ever say you couldn't hear. So, uh, the, the state law is very clear under the municipal use law. That, uh, the way that, uh, zoning board people are selected, meaning they're selected the four-year terms. That's it. Once they're selected, if the councilperson leaves who picked them, their term continues. They are not subject to. Now, again, if they're picked at the time you're picked, they should, it should be co-terminist. But if a councilperson were, and that happens from time to time, resigns, you know, his or her term. That zoning board member continues to serve their complete four years unless they retire, um, resign. So, uh, so that is not the subject of any modification, nor could it be by. So, uh, so that is not the subject of any modification, nor could it be by this governing body. The only thing before you is to make clear that the, the members of the zoning board will vote every year. For whoever their chair and vice chair is, that they will not be term limited out, uh, as exists in our current, uh, ordinance. And the reason is quite simple. There have not been a plethora of people on that board. Who have wanted to serve in the capacity as chair of the zoning board or vice chair. And it's true with our planning board. They have a right to kick them out every year and rotate like you rotate for the most part, council president. But that's not been the case. And keep in mind, when you're the zoning board chair. It's a lot different with all due respect to a council president because you are a quasi judicial. And you have to rule on evidentiary issues with the advice of council, uh, but you are basically the judge. And you need to make sure the evidence that comes in is consistent with the law. And, and when the zoning application is heard, as, uh, certainly Mayor McCartney, who served on the planning board and others here who are, have attended. You understand the importance of the record. And again, the fact that the zoning board has for a number of years chosen the same chair. Has been a decision they've made every year. It's not that he's been a holdover, carryover. So, uh, he can be voted out every time they have a reorg meeting. And, and that someone else can run and, and, and win. So that's, that's all that is before you. Our ordinance obviously goes back, uh, and Mr. Casey and I are dumb, but it goes back twenty-five, thirty years. I don't know why or how that got there, but at the end of the day, there hasn't been anybody else's step forward from the information I have. I've never attended a zoning board attorney, uh, meeting, but they are free to step forward and they should.
And this ordinance, if we pass this, um, change tonight, will apply to any board that we have. If they can self-elect, if they self-elect, or if they are appointed by the mayor, they can continue to serve.
This applies to zoning.
This is only the zoning board, okay?
So, um, again, it, it's an, it's an anomaly in our zoning board ordinance that has that provision. That you can't serve successive terms. Uh, but, but again, none of it takes away the power of the people serving. To pick whoever they want.
And what are the rules for the planning board? Okay. Thank you. While you're looking that up, Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. Um, so have they been, because I guess a comment came my way. That did they take a vote this year for the chair and the vice chair? Every, every year that's been taken, it's documented.
Not, uh, not only that, but, um, Dr. No, Mr. Noer is my appointment. And so.
But he, I think he is exactly correct. They have a reorg meeting every year. They pick their council. They don't have to pick who any of us want. They pick their own council. In fact, they're going through a process now because the current zoning board attorney is in, indicates she's retiring, I think June first. So they need to start, and we put it out, um, uh, to get applicants. And they'll have to make a determination, uh, at that time.
Council President, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I think there, so this is one of those, uh, situations where, you know, there's a, in my opinion, at least. A good reason to go either way, uh, to either term limit or to not. Uh, for those of us that have been involved in organizations, there is something to be said for continuity of leadership, institutional knowledge. Folks that actually understand some of the history around some of the things they have to rule on. And so I can understand that. In places like zoning and planning, um, you know, given the nature of the material that they have to rule on. Um, I also think, so, so that would be arguing for not term limiting the chair. I also think if we were to, um, change the, to, um. Living as it is so that people are term limited, it would force that body to, uh, do two things. Number one, you find a new chair every year or whenever the term limit was up. And number two, when you accept. An appointment to that body, out of your calculus in deciding whether to accept or not would have to be. If you would be willing to serve as chair. Uh, so I think that would actually, I think in some ways that could help and in some ways that could hurt. At, at the end of the day. What was important to me when I spoke about this particular issue is that. The zoning board has held their elections. And, and I'm happy to hear, you know, information that's, that contradicts what I'm saying. Um, they've held their elections and those elections have been, um, in compliance with the way that they should be held. They have integrity. And they had a difficult time identifying anyone other than Mr. Noer to serve as chair. Now, if those are the facts, then we've got a difficult. Situation trying to force him out. Because essentially that would take the body, unless this is not accurate. That would take the body and say, we don't care what your position is. We run a different position. And so that's, that's the back and the forth, um. On it now, you know, if we are serious about developing a bench and making sure that we have qualified leadership in various spaces, especially zoning and planning in particular. Then we should force them. Um, maybe that should be part of the calculus. Um, if that is the case. Against that, actually, I, 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 I think that's a valid argument, but if that is the case, then. The current members would need to know that there is an expectation of them to accept the appointment. Some of them clearly don't want to serve as, as chair. Uh, so that's just my, my.
I appreciate that. And I will share with you something that, um, Dr. Bagoff, um, is doing in the planning board. And that can help speak to exactly, um, the responsibility, the training and the knowledge on how to lead in those capacities. So Dr. Bagoff implemented in the planning board this year. That instead of him running each of the meetings, he is going to ask each of his planning board members. To, um, facilitate a meeting so that they can have the experience and the know-how, um, to run that meeting and to speak, um, publicly. To others. That is because Dr. Bagoff has repeatedly been voted upon as the chair of the planning board. Also because it's very difficult for others to want to step up and take that opportunity. Um, so as opposed to, um, forcing, um, members of the zoning board to take on that responsibility. There are some, uh, ways where they can be, uh, softly positioned and pushed into taking that role and responsibility. Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, I echo Councilman, uh, Rutherford's sentiments. Um, um, I don't think that we should eliminate the term limits. I think they should be co-terminists. And if there's a process of voting in the, um, chair, then that's the process that I believe should be followed. And I, you know, received many emails from residents, um, stating that, so.
The processes that they vote themselves are who they want to be the chair. Right, okay. Uh, is there any more comments regarding the zoning?
I have one comment, because I, you know, even to the other boards, they go about, even if they reappoint the same chair, they're, they're fine. So this is just zoning, okay, because.
Well, no, I, but everybody does it where the board picks.
Yes.
Uh, there's a couple with the.
There's, there's some with the mayor. There's some appointments that are mayoral appointments for the chair and the vice chair.
And, and just so folks know too, uh, I, I know people that, that, that spoke this evening and we appreciate your, your view. Um, but as a person who's had the privilege to man, uh, not on these meetings, but also. Uh, even tougher, the school board meetings, especially when, uh, you know, you have some hot topics with the parents. Um, it, it's, it's tough and, and not everyone wants to be, they want to serve, but it, they sometimes don't want to be put in that position. And they're not easy positions to handle, so, um, I could appreciate that.
I just want to make a brief comment. I kind of have my position I kind of stated before, um, I really feel like it's important to get the most highly qualified. People we can on all of these boards. And I'd like to see us up the standard and appoint people. Who have serious credentials and have the capability to step into that position. And I believe we really do need term limits on the zoning board.
Term limits are, I, I think we, we need to go back to understanding what council just said. The zoning board cannot have term limits. It is mandated by the state. Okay, thank you.
Again, um. The history over certain last ten years, it has been hard to even get members to sit. Let alone to go to, what I think you all recognize, being the chair is, is a, a, a different level of commitment.
Absolutely.
And we know when applicants talk about the importance of applicants for businesses, for homes, for whatnot, who've come before these board. They want a fair hearing and they want, um, and we as a township want the integrity of the record. And, um. You know anecdotally and specific that not with seeing the desire to pick the best people for those boards. Not everybody prepares the same women and you can't stop a different councilperson or the mayor from appointing who they choose. So they may or may not have the same perception or standards that you have. And the goals are always to pick the. But it's not a perfect world and not everybody, some people get appointed to the board and get distracted because of life. And again, don't forget, the people who we are striving to pick are generally the most involved in a multitude of things. So they may be at the, so, so again, the bottom line is there is no perfect solution here. That's why it makes sense to let the board who sees those people. Make the call versus saying we have to arbitrarily just hand the baton off. Uh, and again, the only other point I'll make, um, and again, some of them might be because of the continuity. I'll, I'll take credit of the council. I think we've had good council on both boards. We haven't had lots of litigation spewing from our boards. Um, but I will tell you that when we've had the litigation, the record, so again, what you well know. Um, you know, we have certain people in this town who like to litigate with us. They need to pick that record. And again, you can't blame the chair, but the chair has to be the gatekeeper. It's like judges are gatekeepers. So again, and I just want to be very clear. The most important thing is that the chair is, um, uh, the integrity of the record on all levels. So, uh, I think Dr. Bagoff has done an amazing job at the planning board. Ron Weston used to be an amazing chair when he did it. Um, Mr. Noer has a lanky history. I've never heard of anybody saying he wasn't fair and didn't give people. The appropriate opportunity. Now, does some of it help that he has sent legal training, yes, but Dr. Bagoff didn't and he learned it. He stepped to the plate. He's done very, very well.
Neither did Ron Weston. He didn't have the legal training. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So again, we've been blessed. That doesn't mean they shouldn't open it up to any new person. But I think part of it is that person, Dr. Bagoff, I remember, um, because he's a dentist, I, he's not my dentist, but, but, but I knew him through his practice. He went to school, trained them, and they all, by the way, are mandated to go to, to train. But it takes a certain, certain person who's gonna go all in, because we all know that it's purely thank you, it's volunteer, not that yours. That's a tough role. You've got Lord of the Young and you, you've got the public, you, some of them have other board members who don't even have. With all due respect, some of the professionalism that the five of you have, you know, they just don't always happen.
You're the reason to have highly qualified people.
You know, they don't come out of Central Pass, they're human beings.
Thank you.
Just one thing on that, you know, um, I think we would have an easier time getting people to volunteer. To serve, um, on the board or in leadership. If we weren't so quick to point fingers and yelling, screaming, call names when people. Doing the job. So, you know, this is for everybody. Like, let's take the temperature down, right? If we want people to serve, we've got to be conducive to that. And some of the climate that we have is just despicable, um, and needs to stop. Um, you know, uh, that's, that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed.
Madam Clark. Ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-seven oh nine dash twenty-three. Bond ordinance providing for phases one, two. Oh, I'd had, yeah, I had trouble with it. It doesn't, you know. Four, uh, yeah, five, six of the local units allocable share of the flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties. Buying in the township, appropriating six million five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars therefore. And authorizing the issuance of six million five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar bonds or notes to finance the costs thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first, uh, sorry, on second? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford? Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams? This is a time for public hearing on this ordinance, twenty-seven oh nine dash twenty-three.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding ordinance twenty-seven oh nine dash twenty-three? They're seeing none. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak in reference to this ordinance?
Council President, we still have a significant number of people on the Zoom call. Uh, anybody in the Zoom audience, uh, that would like to, uh, comment, public comment on ordinance twenty-seven oh nine. Dash twenty-three, now is the time to raise your hand.
Council President seeing none.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any comments regarding this ordinance?
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve twenty-seven oh nine dash twenty-three?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford? Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-seven ten dash twenty-three, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees. Setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges. And adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee status as a township employee. Under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel, is there a motion to?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
This is a time for a public hearing.
Is there anyone in, uh, for the public that wants to comment on ordinance twenty-seven ten? Now would be the time. Seeing none, is there anyone in the Zoom audience who would like to?
Anyone in the Zoom audience wishing to comment on twenty-seven, ordinance twenty-seven ten dash twenty-three, please raise your hand. Council President seeing none.
Seeing none, is, are there any colleagues that would like to speak regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clark.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven ten dash twenty-three?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, twenty-seven thirteen dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section forty-seven point five of the revised general ordinances. This ordinance, once it is approved or not, if it is approved this evening, it will be heard on March twenty-first, twenty-three. After the zoning board review. Is there a motion to approve on first reading? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
This is just to introduce it, right?
Only introduce it, yes.
Okay, we, yes.
Okay, um, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Scarpia?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Just let me make a note here. Okay, uh, twenty-seven fourteen dash twenty-three. An ordinance releasing, extinguishing and vacating the rights of the public at a variable width. Sixty-foot right-of-way known as Municipal Plaza Township of West Orange. Uh, is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabber Michael?
I, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilman Rutherford?
To introduce.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. I have a question, I'm sorry. Um, can we please clarify what the, um, actual area is, not by zeros and numbers and meets and bounds? Um, can we make that trans?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a area that runs in front of the library, across the parking lot. In town hall and, and, and around and actually through the police building.
That's the right of way that's gonna be closed. Okay, so we're talking.
Years, years ago, there, that was a roadway. No, obviously no longer.
Because we converted it to a parking lot?
Well, we did a lot of things. We built a police station.
Yeah.
Critical that we adopted so, in order to be able to subdivide and allow the sixty-four units of senior housing to be built in the, quote, existing library site.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, I can just add some brief insight. Uh, there was a road that ran behind town hall, as Mr. Gross has said. It was originally known as Fairmount Avenue and in the nineteen-sixties was changed to Municipal Plaza. Um, but.
Um but it has uh since uh as most mentioned, became a parking lot. So if that clarifies, it was a road that ran behind town hall.
Certainly. So if that road is closed and we're talking about the entrance to the the municipal building, this same building is as well, correct?
The the road we're talking about, this roadway, doesn't exist anymore. You don't see it. It it isn't here. It's it's only on paper.
We'll still have access to this building.
Okay.
We're not losing anything.
Okay.
We can't sell that piece of property if a road could be built through the new private.
Thank you. All right, I'm I'm good. I just wanted to clarify, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty interesting, actually.
So when construction starts and begins, would could we get a full update? Like where, you know, the trucks are gonna be coming out of and, you know, you know, you know, till tonight, but but when.
Sure.
In advance, so I I know, no, but you we laugh, you say you see it, but people don't realize if you shut things down or or whatever, so.
Yeah, we had.
Information's great.
And and this is rather, and I think they're very confident that it won't interrupt the operation of this building at all. And we had a Zoom call with Mr. Albert, so he understands.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Madam Clark. Okay, ordinance twenty seven fifteen dash twenty three. An ordinance amending chapter five, section thirty four point three, section thirty four point four and section thirty four point five. And section thirty four point six and chapter twenty five, section twenty four point two of the revised general ordinances of the township. Of West Orange licensed cannabis entities. Is there a motion to introduce on?
Again, before you approve it on first reading, uh we have two buckets of issues or considerations. So um so Councilwoman Castellino gave us some quote important cleanup, uh which we can address. But I think we have to address initially, we'll call it the substance.
Mm-hmm.
And so based upon what I think I heard from at least uh two or four of the council people. The administration is suggesting that with regard to five dash thirty four point four B. So that is the part that last Tuesday we were directed and did embody in the version you have. And that was posted, it states the number of local licenses shall be limited to a combined total of four active local licenses. We're suggesting the language it deals with, I'll use the word grandfathering, because I think everybody here knows what that means. That you consider the following additional language that you can add today. And it would state as follows, and again, we can wordsmith it later, but I want to get the idea out to you, so you consider it. Not with seeing the forego, comma, all previously issued letters of support. And the entity in resolution twenty three dash twenty three adopted January in twenty twenty three. Shall be permitted to apply for and obtain a license upon receipt of the state license. So that would grandfather all seven again.
Uh no, I I that's not, that's not what I want to do. Because I don't think that any of us want to automatically allow anyone without us having an opportunity to review.
It doesn't automatically. Can you find what be now, which is before you.
Okay.
This is a cap of four.
Right.
What I just said is that cap of four does not apply to the seven letters of support that are previously been issued.
So then would that translate to those seven entities having an opportunity?
Yes.
If their state approved and then they come back to us for approval and then we are going to allow for additional licenses?
No, 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 no.
That's what it means is if any of them go out of business, if they're not renewed for any reason, we cannot give another license in their place. We can only give up to four without changing the ordinance, which will require first and second reading again.
And so what I also wanted to make reference to was a comment and us being aware that the wholesale license has not been re. Um application has not been released. So if we limit this to four. Um then that means that we are not allowing any wholesale businesses to come to West Orange.
I mean, we don't, again, that, you'd have to consider that and amend the ordinance if you so choose. I don't, I don't know that there are any wholesale licenses.
Well, we keep hearing um there's a micro wholesaler from West Orange, but they haven't opened the process yet. So my concern is, again, if we cap it for and once the and the wholesale process, do we know when the application process is opening? Has the state released that information? Okay, then that's fine. I'm I'm fine.
I have a question.
I just want to make sure everybody understands language. I think Councilman Rutherford articulated.
I I agree. Councilwoman?
Yes, yeah, you you ask first, I can wait, because I I have a couple.
My question is, why are we rushing to changes now if there's a moratorium in place? Can we let the process play out with the current seven? Learn from what happens in their process, see what happens, and then go back and affect the changes, because there's a moratorium place. Then we're not seeing.
You can, but he's in the moratorium at the same impact as this. You know what I mean? The moratorium means you've got seven out there. Or.
So no one else can apply?
I'm sorry.
So it means no one else can apply, correct?
No.
Yeah.
So why don't we, why are, why are we changing it to four though?
I'll tell you why.
I I'm confused.
I I am not in agreement with reducing it to four, nor am I in agreement, I am not in agreement to reducing it to four. Nor grandfathering anyone in. I think that language should stay as the current ordinance reads. Four cannabis entities and unlimited micro.
Okay, but then 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 again, just so we get procedural, what I I recommend so that we figure out a way to get through this. Is a a motion to amend, to modify this takes precedence. And therefore, if you want to propose hypothetically that we eliminate that amendment. Then you would make that motion, you get a second, that's debated, and then if you get three votes, it's changed. Then then we keep going until somebody gets three votes.
Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we definitely have to take out this unlimited micro businesses for me to buy into this. And we need the thousand feet. Um we need.
We're gonna do one issue at a time and we're only talking about the number of licenses right now.
This take with one issue, we'll have to go to every issue tonight, but we need one issue to get.
Well, they're related to each other. I mean, you have to, if you want only four, you have to take out the micro businesses. If you have micro business, it means you have an unlimited number all over town, so.
We don't, because we don't have, we have a moratorium, so there's not gonna be any.
That they won't come back later.
They can't come back if we have a closed application process.
Yeah, but you can always open it.
The moratorium is not an ordinance. It it can be revisited and voted on in one council meeting and it it so, you know, I think. Think this actually has more 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 strength to it or more power, more force. I don't know what the right word is. Um I I know that we've had multiple conversations on this publicly and privately. We've heard from the public on this and um you know, we, to have unlimited micro. I think is irresponsible. We can't just leave it open to however many want to come here. Um and I I know from the folks that I've spoken with, um the majority of them, not all of them. The majority of them want some reasonable boundaries around the business. How many, where they'll go, how they'll operate, we talked about hours of operation earlier today. They just want reasonable boundaries and knowing that, you know, we've already done six or seven, depends on how you count it. And have the ability to do as many more as we'd like, as long as they're micros, that gives some people pause.
My my sentiment is that the moratorium slowed us up and halted the process. Um my suggestion and recommendation is that once we go through the applicants. That we have issued letters of support for and resolutions, that we not tamper with the number. Until that application process is complete for all of those entities. I feel that um again, changing that requirement midstream. Does not benefit the businesses and does not benefit this community and how we want to operate in business period moving forward. I am not opposed to reducing the number of micro opportunities or putting a cap. Once these applicants have completed their application process with the township of West Orange, the state of New Jersey. And if they are approved by the state of New Jersey, then for us to come back to the West Orange process and complete their review. However, I am very concerned about changing what we already set in stone, knowing that they are midway through this process. And I think the moratorium speaks to that.
It doesn't, it doesn't, like, they are exempt from this, the way the language would read, all all seven. And even though they're differently situated, because one does not currently have a letter of support. But all seven of them would not be impacted by the maximum number of licenses. And what I I think it does, so in in spaces like this, it's what we see right now is it's hard to bring it back. It's it's not hard to add more. If we have an experience where we say, you know what, we've got seven in town and we really need ten. That's not gonna be hard to do. People aren't gonna be yelling and screaming and or coming to council meetings or calling you at different times of day or night. Telling you, you know, what they think about that. They'll be, if that's what the town wants, if that's the movement, they'll be happy with new opportunity. What's hard is when people already have, some expectations are somewhere in the cycle and now you're saying no. So like that's, it's harder to pull it back. It's easier to push it forward. I think I think we need to, and and this is part of what we talked about last week. When we had this part of the conversation, I tried to engage in some in some debate about what the right number of licenses in town. Should be, and even if we should characterize the the number of licenses awarded by type. Because I think people have a different sentiment regarding dispensaries than they do cultivators, or some people have sentiments regarding labs. Uh wholesalers may come into the picture at some point in time, and though they all have a different impact on the town. So I I think I think we do need to limit micros. Now, what the right number is, that's where we left it off last week. Uh you know, should should there be, whatever that number is, but there should be a limit there. Um and whatever limit we put in now, based on the language that Mr. Trank just gave us. Would not affect anyone that's already been issued a letter or even if they've had that letter rescinded with an opportunity to cure.
So then the alternative is, as opposed to grandfathering in, is to utilize the same language that we originally had, which is seven entities.
No, no.
I'm not. I'm not asking, no, it's no more permanent than what you're saying. We can increase at any given time. We we are the governing body. So I'm asking, Mr. Trank, what is the difference between having seven entities and four and grandfathering them in? Is there, is there a material difference? Asking Mr.
If one is no longer.
Automatic, I'm no, I'm agreeing with both of you.
Okay.
The difference is, the the difference is seven, seven, right? We can agree that, we can agree seven, seven. The difference is that it will automatically constrain. I think is what Castman Rutherford and I.
If they fall off.
If one falls off.
Yes.
But again.
If one falls off.
Yeah, if not, though, they, you cannot, you cannot, I don't want to say we're arbitrarily, but you cannot, if any of those seven. Get the state license, other than the one that needs a site. But but if any, I'm gonna say, if any of those seven get a state license, they go through all those Zooms, they come back here, you can't say, oh, we only want.
Well, we've had that part of the conversation, but what we what we can do, and and correct me if I'm wrong. What we can do is say, if. Say two of them, there are seven in the mix, if two of those seven do not get a state license, or if two of the seven come back. And for whatever reason, obviously not arbitrary capricious or whatever, if two of those seven don't get a license. Then we don't now have two more licenses to offer for folks to apply to come into town.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I understand that language. That's what I was asking him.
They're not going to be knocked out of the cycle.
Understood, understood, but I just needed legal to clarify that and put that on the record. So I'm fine now.
Right.
I'm fine. I'm fine. Thank you. I'm fine.
I I, one more thing real quick and then just for the record, of the seven, of the six letters that have been issued. And the one that has been rescinded but has an opportunity to cure. Are we obligated to give to give them a license when they come back after the state process?
When they come back, you're obligated to consider them. And you can't reject them because you now have no license, these guys are going forward.
Right. You can reject them if there's a reason to reject them, but but not for no.
When you say they they didn't.
Or not because.
You've learned that they didn't fully disclose, but if they lose their location, of course. But if they come back, they get approved by the state, it's the same record and there is not a basis. If if, God forbid, one got arrested for something, if any of that exists, if if there's a problem with the security point, if any other issue. If there's a record, you have a right, but you won't say, I only want four, and you're the fifth one in the door here.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah. If we put in this ordinance a minimum of the thousand feet. When that entity comes back, do they have to adhere to the thousand feet or are they under the one hundred?
They're gonna be, first of all, as you know, we've done the drawings and I believe someone pointed out to me today, I think. That they're all seven, eight hundred feet. So the short answer is, this is designed to make it two hundred. All seven, except the seventh one that we don't have a location yet, all six are going to be more than two hundred feet. From a house of worship property line or a school property line, as is in this revised order.
Okay, well, they're grandfathered in, so if we make, if we make it a thousand feet, we we.
They're grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered.
And also for the whatever the terms.
Well, no, that is not true. That is not true.
Yeah, to to me, when you, what if we could get past one issue? Then you'll debate that issue as the hundred, two hundred, or as you say, a mile or a thousand or whatever you so choose. But right now, what I would recommend, if there is a.
We have a consensus on the language that we have discussed with the four and grandfathered in. Yes, there is consensus.
Well, no, no, no.
I don't have, we have a majority.
Well, hold it, can I wonder, I think then the only way we can body this, so that Karen has a record and so that Mr. Moon and I can take this up tomorrow. Is we need a vote. So I.
I understand.
Pose it to the council president, that again, just so we can have a debate on the language, whether you like it or not, or at least the.
Can I make my comments before we have?
Go ahead.
Yes, yeah.
Can I, can I give her permission to go? I'm sorry. Can I give her permission to go ahead? Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I know this is confusing, so. Cause the whole reason why I don't wanna say, oh, you know, let's not do wholesale, let's not do labs right now. Is because we don't know how those businesses function or operate, and this is why we've been having the issues we're having. We could always add them on later on.
I'm fine with that.
I I I also, I also. You know, again, we we the, I want to grandfather the ones in. Because of legalities, I technically, I know the what the body did, but I technically voted for five. Uh with the same understanding as my colleague, thinking it was, uh we we were limiting um. That we, that there was no limit on micro business. Uh we didn't know there was uh not, that we could have controlled that at the time. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble talking, it's so late and and I I'm getting tired. But at the end of the day, uh you know, it protects the businesses that came forward. However, the the seventh business I'm having a trouble with in understanding. Because now we rescinded the letter for that location, so they can't go to that location. The four forty-five Pleasant Valley Way location, is that what we're saying here?
We rescinded the letter of support based on that location. That is correct, but we gave them an opportunity to cure. And we did not set a limit on their time because we were still trying to figure out what the changes were to this ordinance.
Now, we make any other further, anything, any, any alterations we make to this document. Or do they have to abide by the limitations here or not? That's that's what we're doing. We're doing it to get this right, but I just wanted to see where they fall.
The sooner you make the the amendments so that they know the rules of engagement, the better, is all I can say to you. I I can't, first of all, we don't know when or if they'll come back. And what that site will be, obviously. So I I can't characterize what they're gonna give you, so I can't tell you what the rule.
You know, are you, you're, I think you're asking whether or not this amendment impacts any of the other provisions.
Yes.
And it it gives them any more, any rights to to their current application. I think the answer is the amendment only grandfathered them in for consideration. It doesn't change any of the terms and conditions.
Okay.
That they'll be valuable.
I mean, I certainly they gotta be the logical analysis.
Okay.
And 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 just one last statement, and just so folks know, I I know there was. And, and, and just one last statement, and just so folks know, and I know there was, you know, I, I know, and I'm going to go to my, my newest colleague. Um, because you threw out some stats about, you know, the percentage of people that supported the initiative. I can't even begin to tell you how many people I spoke to that have supported the initiative. And are so concerned about the number of sites. So again, I'm hearing all different views from folks that, you know, have, you know, have maybe changed their mind or have been impacted differently. Getting, you know, whatever education, but you know, and that's where my, you know, that's where my thoughts come from. Yeah, and I had the same experience as you did. A lot of the people, in fact, one right here in the audience who's been very, been here for many, many. Council meetings, voted for it, but didn't know they were voting for unlimited micro businesses. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, my whole thing is, I think we're, we're rushing to make changes to it. I think that we should let the process play out with the seven people, or the six people we've been led to support to and the one entity we've given an opportunity to cure. Um, because we're going to make changes along the way. We don't know, you know, how long it's going to take them to go to state, when they're going to come back. Some moratorium in place. I think that we're rushing to make decisions now, and I think that we should let everything kind of process. And, um, again, I, I, I think that, I think we should wait.
The, the compromise language that I articulated.
The number specifically, like how are we coming up with the number? I disagree.
But the compromise language I've suggested ends the uncertainty for those seven businesses. That's what you're hearing, that, that, that uncertainty will. Again, if you were investing in whatnot will drive you. You know, and that's the bottom of government a lot of time. People don't like to go, there's only one thing and they don't, another, and it's every ending. We need to settle on the, the number and the number that have been approved by this governing body is seven. So what we're saying is those seven people get a right to play out the process. The state is doing.
It's six, but go ahead.
Well, it's six plus one, because you, like you said, you give them a right to cure. Okay, and then that seven groups will play out. Six in the state, and then it comes back here. The one will come back here with a new location if they can find one. And then the bottom line is, if any of them don't get approval or don't meet the criteria. Then the bottom line is, it defaults to four.
Can you repeat the language change?
So all I'm suggesting is we add to the end of B, the following, not with seeing the forego. Okay, which is the forecap, comma, all previously issued letters of support. And the entity in resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three adopted January ten, twenty twenty-three. Shall be permitted to apply for a license upon receipt of the state license. It doesn't mean that you have to give it to them, but it does mean that you're going to cure it and you're not going to deny it on the basis that you only want before.
I move for the acceptance of the amendment.
We need a second. Second to debate the language, just to debate that language.
Our second to debate it.
Second, now.
Councilwoman Castel.
I, I think we've.
I still don't have a question. I, I still don't understand. If, if the, the number seven, if we were to change the, this ordinance to put the thousand feet in from the schools.
We're, we're, we're not, we're not talking about, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please. We're only talking about this. We're not talking about the distance from the schools or the anything. This number is the only thing we're dealing with now. That's it. We'll get to the distance, but we have to do things in.
Well, I can't agree to that without the distance.
Well, we're not gonna, you don't have the votes for the distance. You didn't have the votes the last time. We discussed that.
What I think she's trying to understand is if we were to change it to a thousand feet. And I think this is a question that can actually be answered. I think this is known. If we were to change it to a thousand feet, how many of the existing mix of businesses that have received a letter would still be a, uh?
None, none. Conversation, we have a map that's been presented.
I knew the answer.
I, I, but the point is, the thousand feet distance will discriminatively eliminate. Every business that has given, received a letter of support.
Not if we grandfather them in.
You cannot, you cannot do that.
So what you're suggesting is the opposite of what we talked about. That this, this, as it is now, the, the terms of, by which the applications are going to be judged. Will, will be regulated by what the ordinance that's in place. What you're talking about is giving them exemption on that as well, which almost guarantees them a license. Right. And it makes it almost impossible to replace them should we want them, that particular operator gone for any reason. And it could be twenty years from now. It makes it almost impossible to replace them unless we do zoning townwide differently. We'd have to look at the entire twelve square miles to find spaces. Uh, that's, that's going to be tough.
Thank you.
Speaking of grandfathered in, can you just clarify that? If the majority votes for the four. What happens when, let's say, five of these entities receive licenses from the state and then from us? A year later, if they're not within compliance of this, can they still renew their license?
If they're grandfathered in, yes. If they're grandfathered in, yes. Okay, thank you. No problem.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'm going to make a motion.
The second, so there is no more motions until we complete the vote on this.
This is a motion, Ms. Carnival, to amend this.
Thirty-four, four B, what is this? Thirty.
A motion to amend.
It's a, it's.
Thirty-four dot four B.
Thirty-four point four B, correct.
Okay, and we, we can call for the vote.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Castellino.
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Gebre Michael.
No.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarp.
No.
Council President Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I think the next, um, one would be, to the extent it's going to be any discussion, well, anybody can bring up any other provision.
Let me just bring that real quick, it's real close. It's in thirty-four, five B. At the end of that paragraph, there's a part that's edited out. That needs to be re-added.
Where is the last three?
This section is one that Councilwoman Castellino provided me some language on. So you remember, we talked about this last Tuesday.
Yeah.
The goal here is to get to the natural person.
Yes.
So, uh, as we know, corporations are going to be owned by LLCs and partnerships, and it gets complicated. And so the con, the concept is, and the chief does this when they look at ABC license, is to get the whole learn chart to the natural people. So, um, one of the points that, uh, Councilman Castellino pointed out to me was, as we know, LLCs are called members. They're not called partners, and they're not called shareholders, they're called members. So basically, we streamline all this language to basically say, we want to know all the owners, including of any percent. Remember, we talked about this last week? And so the last, the last sentence that, that we have in this edit is. The disclosure shall continue until the names and home addresses of every individual natural owner are disclosed. For every entity which has an interest direct or indirect in the licensed cannabis entity. So I believe, and obviously I welcome your.
Has been listed. You gotta have, you had taken that out. That's all. But my language is different than yours, your updated edited language.
So you, you, you're saying I should add in, has been.
Has been listed, has been.
I'm going to say has been disclosed.
Discovered.
So that's the, uh.
And can you go back to the number of that change, please?
I'm sorry.
Where are we talking about?
Well, okay. Best if I.
Oh, you have it in the back of legislation.
It'd be best if I gauge you.
You have it on the back. Very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, this goes back to being consistent with, you know, like you try to be consistent with the ABC laws and where they have to report this year.
The ABC laws, they only require.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good.
But, but again, um, so the other point that Mayor McCartney and Council President, uh, pointed out to me the other day is just. Um, we had it to a hundred feet of the property line, not the school building. Um, and we wanted that to be the same thing, uh, for House of Worship, the property line.
I don't think it's, well, maybe it doesn't. This one in mine, it didn't say from the property line of the school. It just said from the school.
We changed it, yeah.
So mine, I have, I have outdated it.
So we, we're, we want to make them consistent and we. From the property.
Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can we move on?
Yeah, I, I want to, I want to add something to the.
Okay, where are we?
To the, uh, the feet from the school.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Oh, from the feet from, from the.
So the second you should look at.
Section five.
Section.
I mean, page five.
Page five, yeah, exactly. We're on the same page. Okay, uh, you're looking at, uh, twenty-five dash twenty-four point two, B two, O two.
So we, we're changing the property line from any school building to say any school property. No, no, then no, I'm good, I'm good with that. I, I know my colleague was uncomfortable with, and as multiple people are in the community. And I know we, we talked about two hundred. I, I mean, I think, well, we went to four hundred fifty feet.
I'm sorry.
I know we have one, one entity that we need to, you know, I guess we can't grandfather in.
Administration, again, we've been at a hundred and we're going to two hundred. And again, keep in mind, by the mere fact that six of the seven have sites, they're not going to move.
No, but moving forward in the future, because now, because. We're restricting the number of opportunities. There is no future.
Well, and again.
No, 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 you, you never know.
But I guess the point is, to go back to, I think, something that Councilwoman Gebre Michael said. Again, we kind of got the omelet ready to put in the oven with the, the sites and locations. There isn't any empirical evidence to change this right now. It's not, you're not going to move a building closer to a school or a house of worship because you've already proved this sex. The seventh, again, I think you, you know, so, so again, everybody played by the rules of a hundred. Now we're going to make it two hundred. The six are good. They're ready to go. We'll see what happens in the state.
I, I, Mr. Trink, I, I think Councilwoman Castellino, her point is that even at four fifty, it does not eliminate any of the.
With those ones.
No, it's three ninety-five. That one is four ninety-five.
Four ninety-five.
And it's from an orange school.
It doesn't matter.
Well, the original language had West Orange schools.
Yeah, but we changed.
But we changed that.
It should be any school.
It should be any school.
But I guess, with, with, you know, again, this has been obviously a painful process for.
Yes.
All of you and for all of us. And, and I think the point is that. Um, just getting this done so that we can move forward, we'll see how those licenses shake out. And if in the interim, there is some issue that comes up, they can address it. It won't affect, yes, the six that exist.
I, I disagree. I, I say do four fifty now. It makes it a little strong. Listen, I, I know, I know you guys are frustrated. But, but, but I can't get through the day without getting phone calls from people. So it is, and unfortunately, people didn't wake up to this till.
If there's a motion by Councilwoman Castellino to change the fee from two hundred to four fifty, or if there's a second.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I make a motion four hundred fifty feet, change the school distance.
House of Worship, you're okay, two hundred, but school is one four fifty?
Uh, so, so the.
We haven't had dry goes in the maps. I can't tell you.
Yeah, I, I don't think, without having the map evidence in front of us, because I asked for that. To, to make certain we would not be infringing upon any of the establishments or entities that we had already given letters of support. So I'm not interested in making this change without having any empirical evidence or mapping that says otherwise. So we'll either have to table that. We can't do that.
There's a second to the motion that gets debated, that should get three votes. If it doesn't, it's not.
All right, so there was a motion made.
His motion is to amend the parts of the ordinance beyond wood schools from two hundred and fifty to four hundred feet. Is there a second?
Two hundred.
I'm sorry, I had a second, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Woman Castellino is asked to further amend what's in front of you. From two hundred feet from a school property line to four hundred and fifty feet from a school property line. It needs a second.
All right, but before, can I just ask one, what does, it's, it's my understanding that moving it to four fifty from a school does not affect any of the current.
No, I'm not, again, every time we've had this question, when, and again, we've had dry go do the maps, I'm not going to.
Yeah, Greg, uh, okay, so.
We don't, we don't have the map evidence to support that.
I have it.
Yeah, but I can, you can, you know where they are. So we're talking about one that's on South Valley. It's right next to, to.
Our Lady of.
South Valley Barbecue.
Right.
And then the nearest school is Forest Street School, which is in Orange, which is on the other side of CBS.
There's a church school there. Our Lady of the Valley.
The church, the church is more than two hundred feet away, going towards South Orange. Our Lady of the Valley in Orange on Valley Road.
Yes.
Yeah, that's going to be more than four hundred feet.
We don't. Couple blocks.
Exactly.
Couple blocks.
No, it's not. So if we're going to make educated and informed decisions like we have talked about, then we need empirical factual evidence.
We need all the.
So right now, we don't have the evidence to support anything outside of the two hundred feet.
More than willing to ask Ms. Ragel to do it, and then we can consider that in a different event.
Well, absolutely. That, that's fine. So we don't have a second for that.
There, then.
We don't have a second for that. Mr. Trink, if we can please move on.
That, again, I am not aware of any, other than if, if, uh, Councilwoman Scarp is going to seek to move to a thousand. If you think considering time and see if there's a second for that. And I think that's what you want.
Yeah, I'd like a thousand.
Okay, so is there, I think you should do the second half. I think there wasn't a second.
Well, yeah, fortunately, I'm trying to find a, a middle ground here.
Thank you.
We can, we can examine it and revisit it later.
Okay, thank you.
So there, as amended, Ms. Carnival.
Yes.
Which will just have the, the, the change in, um, uh, Councilman Rutherford and I discussed at the end of, I have the language. And then the, we'll call it grandfathering, which on thirty-four point four. Uh, for this ordinance is now ready for adoption at first reading.
Thank you.
Oh.
Well, I have one more question just on that, in that same section, um, number two. So this is thirty-four, five, B two.
What page?
Um, in the original one, it's page three, and this one, it is. Page three.
This, the red line one?
Yeah.
Thirty-four, five, B, two. Says the name of any other business entities in which any of the individuals identified pursuant to subsection B one of this provision have. Or have had an ownership interest which cultivates, manufactures, wholesales, or, or dispenses cannabis or cannabis products. Invests or finances in any such entity, or is regulated by any governmental entity. So in that last clause, three, is regulated by any governmental entity. My first question is, is that only in regards to cannabis, or is that in regards to any governmental regulation?
I don't know where you are either. I'm sorry.
Thirty-four, five, B two.
It would be any, um, it would be any councilman, because the goal would be, if, if they were regulated by any, we should find out and make sure they have a clean, so to speak, bill of health, so.
Okay, so then my second, I just wanted clarity there, and because that's what it says. The way I read it is any governmental entity, it's not just cannabis related. But second, how far back do they have to disclose that? So like, if I was in business fifteen years ago. And I'm, I haven't been in business now for fifteen years and, and, you know, in a way that triggers something in this clause, do I still have to disclose that? Like, is there some period of time at which we shouldn't force people to tell us if it's been long enough? I don't know that there is. I'm asking.
It's, again, I, I think it, it, again, um, she left the room, but. My gut is, let's go to liquor licenses, which is the one we see the most. My gut is that they, when you apply for a liquor license, they want to know if you've ever had a liquor license, ever. Because if there was a blemish on it, they might say, the basis is not to give you a new one.
All right, just want to be clear, because that, because that would, the way it's written means if you've ever, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago, doesn't matter. Okay, as long as we're clear on that. I, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to be clear. Um, and then I have one other thing that's a, could be a typo, but maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Sure.
It's in thirty-four, eight, uh, E. The last line, thirty-four dot eight E. Operating requirements and prohibitions.
Thirty-four dot.
Eight. E.
No.
Operating requirements. Uh. Yeah, it is. It's on, it's on the top of page five, page five. Top, you know.
When they start the police chief, what do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that last sentence, the police chief or designatee shall have two authority. Is that no authority or the authority?
T H E.
Okay, that's the.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we changed that. And if you look at the last section, there's something that's not clear to me, too. This is in twenty-five dash twenty-four dot two, conditional uses. If you go all the way down to eight, I don't know if it's updated in this language. Shall meet of, is it meet all of?
Shall meet the, shall meet the all of?
All of, or should meet, shall meet the required?
Shall meet all of.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's.
Thank you for those, Mr. Rutherford, Councilman.
No worries.
So, uh, Ms. Carnival, the vote is, uh, whether or not to adopt them first reading. I do think, Ms. Carnival, similar to what you did, I, you know, with, uh, the timing, since there is zoning aspects, it is.
Yeah.
Mr. Moon thinks it's gonna have to go to zone.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry. So wouldn't that be second reading would be?
The twenty-third of.
March twenty-third.
Yeah, cause their next zoning.
I just know you noted it on A, so.
Oh, you know, well, yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if this was gonna pass, so I didn't note it.
You're not a better, huh?
Yeah, cost a lot of money, so I stayed on the safe side, so. It's going to be read, uh, on second reading on March twenty-first by us. Zoning meeting is the sixteenth of March.
We meet again at that on the twenty-fourth.
Huh?
I guess it's the timing.
March twenty-first is March, the second meeting and.
You need to get a chair.
Yeah, March twenty-first, that's our meeting. I'm sorry. Yeah, and the zoning meeting is the sixteenth. That's why we can't hear it until the twenty-first.
Okay, I think I've asked before before that.
Council President, if I may?
Yes.
Our motion that we accept this, uh, ordinance on first reading as amended, right?
So move.
Yes. Uh, okay, and is there a second?
Me.
So, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, um, pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Yes, um, pending matters, none, new matters.
Excuse me, Council, I just, just for Mr. Moon, just real quick, the, the ordinance for the, um, I know you did it, but we gotta get it on the agenda, and I know, uh, you have, we have to talk about uh, increase in fees for the vape licenses to add cannabis to that and to up the.
They're, they're all, they will all be on that. We're, we're gonna be presenting new ordinances to move the, um, uh, the establishment of fees from ordinance to resolution, and then there'll be a resolution to. Fees from, you know, permits and that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Can I just say something real quick? It's, it's, it's down, so I'd rather we end on an up note.
Well, we're not ending yet. I have some more.
So let's do this so that we can do your stuff, which would be good, I would hope. Hope it's not me.
But it's not, but, but before you go to, I, I do want to acknowledge something that I had planned to say under our council liaison announcements. And I do wanna offer a moment of silence for Eunice one four from Saraville and the Saraville community. I want to make sure that our community also understands, um, that all flags will be flown in the state of New Jersey at half staff tomorrow in honor of her, uh, death as well as, uh, mourning. Um, I, I do want to reiterate what Councilman Rutherford said about, uh, cyberbullying, um, and about just inciting any type of violence, any type of frustration against our municipal employees or our township officials. We live in a time where all this type of incitement is seen as it's okay. And it is not okay. I am not supportive of any of the cyber, cyberbullying tactics and strategies that have been utilized by some of our business owners, any of the incidents that have occurred when our, um, people are going to do their jobs. We have rules, we have ordinances, we have laws that govern how everything should happen in this community. And when you are outside of compliance, that does not give you the right to criticize or incite any type of hatred towards the people that work here. That is unacceptable. That is not to be tolerated, and we are not going to have the employees who work for this municipality feel unsafe in this community. We would rather you leave this community if you cannot comply by the laws, rules, and regulations that we live here. This is T M E Williams, Council President, speaking to anyone who feels differently about the business owners as well as the residents, as well as the employees who work in this town. It's not worth it. It's not worth it. Life is too precious. It's too, it's not. So that's what I wanted to say about that. And again, it's, it's just not gonna be tolerated around, around this bench. It's just not. It's not.
So I, I, I said earlier, I think we need to take the temperature down. I, I, um, you know, I understand as some of you do, um, what it's like to go through this kind of stuff. And I, I, for some of these folks, I really feel sorry for them. I'm amazed at how they can engage in that kind of behavior and consider themselves upstanding citizens. I'm not talking about your particular situation. I'm talking about some of the stuff that's been directed to me. Um, I think we owe it to, um, ourselves, our families, our community, to conduct ourselves with a certain level of decorum. Um, and I have, uh, certainly, uh, said enough about that in many public meetings. I think we can do better about disagreeing without being disagreeable. Um, harassment shouldn't be tolerated. And I, I, you know, I'm not asking anybody to leave. I'm just saying I think we can do better. Um, in addition to that, um, this week, I wanted to, uh, thank our public safety officers, our police and fire. We had a tragic accident, uh, this week, um, and it happened to be in my neighborhood. So a bunch of folks have been talking about it. And so in addition, when we have this moment of silence, I'd certainly want to uh, consider the family that has been impacted by the fatal accident, uh, on Friday night. Um, our police, uh, were there in great numbers, uh, firefighters, uh, ambulance, um, and they did everything they could, um, to, to render aid and help in that moment. And that's what we need them for. It's what we asked them to do. Um, it wasn't safe for them to continue all of the work they had to do that night. So they came back and they finished up today as far as the investigation is concerned. Um, but that family is still going to be impacted, you know, from this point forward. So we certainly wanna keep them in our thoughts and prayers, too. I don't know that everybody's been notified, so I'm not, uh, saying more details.
The names of the, um, those that were impacted, so. Kinda saying, uh, and then just to maintain their privacy until, uh, a later time. I don't think that we should either, so we're agreement there. Um.
So can we have that moment of silence and then we can?
Yes, yes, if we can have that moment of silence, I'd just like to take a moment of silence, um, for those instances and just, just be mindful. Um, we live in, we live in strange times, and we have to be mindful, we have to be careful. Um, I do wanna echo the sentiments because I did receive a email communication text message um, that I did share with our mayor and chief of police, and how quickly, um, the nine-one-one call was responded to. So within three minutes of a nine-one-one call, the police were on the scene. And unfortunately, the maker of that nine-one-one call happened to be a doctor.
No, fortunately.
Well.
Yeah, fortunately.
Fortunately and unfortunately, because those images you can never remove, and it was, it, it is very difficult from, for him.
And, and may I say, not just a doctor, but one of the smartest people, period. Like, we can end the same, the guy is brilliant. If there was something that he could have done, if, if you, if it were me, I would want him. I don't say his name either, um, but yeah, I would want him there.
Absolutely. So I just wanna thank, I wanna thank him again, as well as the police department and the first responders um, for just being available, being on the scene and doing all that they can. And if we can just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilman Rutherford.
That was it. I was finishing my prayer.
You, um, said you wanted.
That was what I wanted to say about the accident.
Okay, all right, no problem. Um, and then the only other things I just wanted to, where, does anyone have any pressing liaison um, announcements that need to be discussed tonight?
Uh, I do, um, uh, the Arts Council is honored to present the community, the Diva Difference Sisters with Voices, unabashedly bold, unapologetically black, an art exhibit. Um, that's, they're going to have a artist reception this Saturday, the eleventh, from noon to four P M. The exhibit will be, um, held from February fourth through March fourth. And, um, to learn more, you can visit westorangearts.org.
Thank you. Under new business, uh, March second is National Read Across America Day, um, to celebrate reading as a favorite activity. And I wanted to ask my council colleagues, um, I have talked to the Board of Ed, um, if they would be willing and interested to go into the schools for Read Across America Day and read to the children. So if you all would like to participate in that, I have everyone's consent. I'll set up a schedule. In addition to that, as the public has already been informed, on, um, February sixteenth, we will be holding a session on uh, Rock Spring, and to continue into that vein, um, I am going to, and have already put in motion, um, a Let's Talk About It program with, uh, other stakeholders in the community. Um, those who will be present include, uh, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, uh, the members of the Board of Ed. Um, I'm going to ask that our chief of police also be in attendance, and our mayor, um, is willing to commit to those. We're looking to do the second Thursday monthly in different, um, communities across West Orange or around West Orange, um, so that we can really hear the needs of the community. Um, this is a community talkback, um, so that we can go and listen and make sure for those who don't have an opportunity, um, to come to council meetings, um, just to make sure we're attentive and listening to the concerns of the community.
I just want to announce one also. Denim and Diamonds, uh, the Thomas Holcomb Scholarship Fundraiser, sponsored by West Orange African Heritage Organization, is this Saturday, February eleventh, from seven P M till midnight, uh, at the V F W on Eisenhower Parkway in Roseland. You can see any member of the West Orange African Heritage Organization for your tickets, or go by W O A H O dot org, uh, for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. Again, it's been a.
Business question. John, um, when do you anticipate? I'm sorry, Mr. Rose. When do you anticipate a draft budget? Because March is around the corner and.
We are, we are, we are working on it. At, at the next meeting, I'll ask you to schedule, uh, dates.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, uh, to the community, thank you. It has been a long night. Uh, this will not become a habit. We appreciate your attentiveness. We appreciate your advocacy, and we appreciate your comments. Um, and, and thank you, thank you. Happy Valentine's Day to all the residents in West Orange. Uh, please be safe, and we look forward to seeing you at our next scheduled meeting on February twenty-first at six thirty P M.
Your motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, West Orange. Thank you all.
Council, Councilman, for February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Good night.